Please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Rubello?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick has asked to be excused.
I make a motion to excuse him. All right, support.
Moved by Councilman Rubello, supported by Councilwoman Burgess to excuse Councilman Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we enter into proclamations and presentations, sad news today, or I have to share with you. On July 30th, Evelyn Frederick passed away. She was Ron's mother. She was a, had reached 100 years old a couple of months ago. And she actually served the community in this way. Her husband Cass Frederick was city councilman here through the 70s and 80s. And then, of course, she was mother to Ron Frederick here, who has served the council since early 2000s. She was, again, wife, mother, mother of two, Ron and Don. And Don has passed on to who dedicated a good part of his life to South Lake. Grandmother, great-grandmother. We know her in many capacities. One specifically, she loved baking, and she would always supply us with bizels during the holidays. Evelyn was warm, gregarious. And a comment for, and Ron is not here, but Ron cared for her at the end of her life. And when I say he cared for her, he cared for her at the end, for the last almost two months. She dedicated her life to him, raising him. And Ron dedicated, at the end, selflessly in support in her final days. There couldn't have been anything more that Ron could have done as he stayed in that home with Mrs. Frederick and took care of her at the end of her life. And I know he didn't want any regrets, and he certainly didn't have any. He did a tremendous job. So I ask for a moment of silence for Evelyn Frederick. Thank you. Keep the Frederick family in your prayers as they go through. As we all know, it's tough to lose a parent. And so keep them and Ron and his family and Don's family in your prayers. We also lost a great asset to this community. That was Joe Claycombe, who served in many capacities for almost 50 years. So we will get a proclamation if that's, we're all good with that. And we will get that proclamation together and hopefully get them here at the next meeting. But again, we lost another person in Joe Claycombe. So we'll honor him, hopefully, the next meeting with a proclamation. With that, we will move to proclamations and presentations. It says A, but we do have a B and a C here, too. So we'll start with the Shorewood Kiwanis Harper Car Cruise, August 27th. We've got Andrea and Roseanne here. So, and I know we got a lot of Kiwanis here, so fantastic.
I'm gonna move this down, since I'm not very tall.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and guests. We are, some of our members of Shorewood Kiwanis here today. And I'm gonna let them all introduce themselves in a minute and just say their name. And we are honored to be here to talk about our 17th year of doing the Harper Cruise, which is definitely our biggest fundraiser of the year. And we love partnering with the city on this event. And we are gonna have our co-chair, one of our co-chairs here, Roseanne, explain all about that in a minute. But thank you for having us. So I am Andrea Strutz. I am the current president of Shorewood, and thank you for having us tonight.
Let's say your name.
Oh, my name's Mike Dennewith.
Sharon Gostowski.
Chris Anderson.
Scott Woods.
Carol Pabham.
Diane Deiner.
Nicola Vatti.
Nicola's brand new to our Kiwanis club. We're very glad to have her and all of these people. Well, the event of the year is here. It's the Shorewood Kiwanis Harper Charity Car Cruise. It's the only 100% charity car cruise that the proceeds goes to help children in our community. The event is Wednesday, August 27th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. It's a free car cruise. It is open to anybody. The public is welcome to pop a squat and enjoy it. The cruise is on Harper Avenue from Eight and a Half Mile to 12 Mile Road. We have 170 generous sponsors, 28 open parties. Shorewood Kiwanis is very thankful for the businesses and people who sponsor our cruise. Royal Brian Ford is our corporate sponsor. They will be set up in the Kroger parking lot at Harper and Nine Mile Road. Excuse me. They will have the Detroit Roller Derby. They'll have new and classic cars, food vendors, and games. Please come and enjoy. They are a great sponsor, and we enjoy working with Amy O'Brien-Crabitz and her team, including Sasha Murphy, who manages the Harper Cruise Facebook site. Our headquarters for the cruise is at the Rahie Executive Center at 23550 Harper Avenue. The Rahie family is very supportive of us. We will have T-shirt, tents, and walkers who will be selling shirts. They are $20. Shirts will be available at Royal Brian Ford, Village Market, First State Bank on Harper Avenue, and Motor City Mission this week. Hopefully, we'll come in Wednesday. We have two charity partners, Kids on the Go and Motor City Mission, and they help us to sell the T-shirts, and they get a portion of that money. The green placards that say Harper Cruise on 25 are available for donation. Royal Brian Ford is the sponsor of the green placards this year, but we receive them from Cruise and Media Company. The businesses along Harper Avenue welcome your business. Please support them. We could not do this cruise without the members of the Shorewood Club and the support of the City of St. Clair-shores. Thank you. This takes a year to plan, and all their help is beneficial in producing this cruise. Come one, come all, to Harper Avenue and enjoy it. It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank, first off, that's the wrong thank you, because we are thanking you. You do a great event here. It's gone on for decades. We really appreciate it. We look forward to it, except it's near the end of summer. That's probably the one slate. But it's a great cruise, and so we truly appreciate it. So thank you for everything. And then on top of that, of course, you know, we, it was Shorewood Kiwanis that gave us the donation for $100,000 as we work on these pickleball courts at the north end of our city at Kite Monroe. Without that, we wouldn't have that, hopefully, by the end of the fall here, we wouldn't have that done and completed and have pickleball for, in the north end, for our residents and community. So thank you for that. You have been a great service to this community for decades, and we truly appreciate all you do and all the hard work in here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you, residents. I hope you all come and enjoy it. It is a fun family event. It's safe. Just bring your chair and support the businesses around that are there that have things to give out, or not free, but, you know, have available. Our car this year on our poster is a lowrider. We have, well, I have already talked into one lowrider club, so I'm hoping that we'll have more other clubs or more lowrider clubs. So.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
So we'll see you Wednesday, the 27th, on Harper Avenue. Thank you so much.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
God bless.
Thank you. The B and C, I know we have some people from the fire department. They want to talk about their golf outing. So come on up here, and then we'll do a C.
Good evening, Council.
Evening.
September 12th, the St. Clair-shores firefighters will be hosting our golf outing to raise money for the Children's Burn Camp, Good Fellows, a couple of the local charities. All the money's gonna go directly into, like, St. Clair-shores, keep it local. We're hoping to have as many people turn out as possible. We do have several spots still open, as well as all sponsors. So please reach out to the St. Clair-shores firefighters if you want to attend.
Okay, what date is it again?
September 12th.
September 12th. Great. Thank you. And then item C is our DPW Director, Brian Babcock. We did have a large rain storm, four inches, or pretty close to four inches, that came down in our community. And I wanted Mr. Babcock to talk about the rain event, talk about our pumps, and talk about what occurred.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we did have a significant rain event that fell on Monday, July 28th, 2025. This next slide we have here, this is a chart that actually came from Macomb County Public Works. And it shows that we received about four inches of rain in an hour and 15 minutes, which is a very, very significant amount of rain. I actually, I saw a resident's rain gauge from his yard that actually showed six inches in the area of 11 Mile and Manhattan. So, but this was at Bond here in Jefferson. This is what was recorded there, so. And what happened from this rain, we experienced immediate street flooding, vehicle damage from vehicles that got caught in these streets, and also those that tried driving through. We had multiple road closures, you know, mainly, you know, Little Mac, Harper, Jefferson, the north-south roads were all inundated with water. And since the rain event, we have heard from 360 homes that had water in the basement. This particular picture here, this was at Jefferson and Lance. And this was taken about, I think I was there at like about 6 o'clock. And then at 8 o'clock, there's a brand-new pump station there by the Blue Goose. And it was just running, running, running. And all of a sudden, at 8 o'clock, it caught up with how much rain, and the water went down. And this is what we found throughout the city from this amount of rain. We found that the storm sewers, some of our storm sewers are on pump stations that lift up the water and push it out into Lake St. Clair. Some are on gravity systems. For example, the 10-mile drain system that runs between 10 Mile and 11 Mile here, collects the rainwater, runs down Jefferson, and then it goes to the canal at 10 Mile and Jefferson. That's a gravity drain system. That was up, too. So both pump station systems and gravity systems were both holding water. And something, what we do during and after storm events is we monitor all of our pump stations. We have some 40 stormwater pump stations throughout the city. And we have them on a system that monitors, and it also alarms. So if it sees that there's a problem with an alarm or a pump, it'll send us an alarm. Or if it stops running, if it trips, or if we lose electricity to it. So this is our monitoring system. And then the bottom right there, you can see, there's a graph. The red line on this particular pump station, it shows that the pump's running. So there were some people that were questioning whether the pumps were running or not. On this particular one, you can see, boom, when it turns on at 4:30 p.m., and it continuously ran until it shut off. So we're able to track that with our trending. On top of that, we also have our employees that, you know, they manually check these pump stations visually, get eyes on them during routine maintenance, but also during the storms. You'll see the trucks driving around with the lights on there, you know, going to check out these pump stations and make sure they, you know, they're running. Because from time to time, we do lose electricity, or pumps overran. And this particular rain event, we did not have any of that. Happy to report that all of our pump stations were working, working well. Now, this is just an example area of the city where, you know, I think we were hit the hardest. These are some pump runtimes from three different drainage districts, the Milner, St. Clair, and Alexander Pump Station districts. The rain in this area started at 4:00 p.m., and many of these pumps ran continuously until the early hours of the next morning. You can see that, like, the Milner pump station, it ran from 4:30 until 1:00 a.m. St. Clair ran from 4:30 to 3:59 a.m. And Alexander ran from 4:30 to 1:49 a.m. So it took a long time for these pumps to get all that water off the streets, you know. And I give the example of, if you take a five-gallon bucket, you dump it into your, you know, your sink, or, you know, it takes a while for that water to get down. And that's what happened on these, on these streets. So we just wanted to bring up some, some things that we had been hearing, some misconceptions that we had heard. We had heard that pump stations failed causing the flooding. And like I said, I'm happy to report that all of our pump stations were functioning and working continuously through the rain event. There was questions of if we had to turn off any pumps for I-94 or 696 interstate system. And that's not the case. We have two completely separate systems. They have their own pipes that go out to Lake St. Clair, so they're separate from our system. So we don't have to interact with their drainage. And then that the pipes in the city are too small to handle a normal rainstorm, and that that's not the case. It was designed, but not for a rainstorm of this significance. So just some next steps, some recommendations. If you would like to visit the city website, we do, under the sewer department, have some tips and brochures on there electronically that people can read. And it just gives some tips on how to keep rainwater away from your house. You know, making sure your gutters are clean, making sure your downspout shoots far enough away from the house so you don't have water accumulating, like that picture in the middle there. And then moving forward, if you do get water in your basement, make sure to call the DPW. We want to try to respond as quickly as possible. We go out and we'll check the city main sewers to make sure that there's no problems with them, that they're not holding back water, because it is a public, open drain system. And, you know, it might be working great today, but tomorrow, something might have gotten in there. So it's helpful if you call the DPW, report, you know, water in your basement, and then we can send people out to respond and make sure everything's working correctly, so. So that's all I have. I don't know if there's people here that wanted to talk about the rain event. I can be available in the conference room outside Council Chambers here if anybody does want to talk about the rain event. There's also a public comment at the end of the meeting here, if you'd rather wait to the end of the meeting and address Mayor and City Council as well, so.
Mr. Dennewith, do you have a question?
More for the public knowledge. Brian, we have some storm drains in the city that are actually throttled back, the sewer, street drains that are throttled back to actually run a little slower than what they could. But that's for a reason, isn't it?
Yeah, so for an example, if you went over to the neighborhood where St. Isaac Joe's Church is, you'll find that the catch basin's over there. Instead of having, you know, multiple openings, it's usually about six openings this big. And that's done on purpose, because those catch basins, we want the water to sit up on the streets. Because if we had the openings and let all that water in right away, that's a combined system. So all that rainwater would overwhelm that sanitary sewer and end up in basements. So in those combined sewer neighborhoods, which that's only, like, that particular, you know, that's like maybe 5%, 10% of our city, but.
I think another one is located near Princeton Elementary.
Yes, correct.
So just for residents' sake to know that a flooded street is not necessarily an indicator of the city, something malfunctioning. It is sometimes designed, because most people would rather have water in the street than their basement, so.
But most streets, 90% of the city, you know, we do have separate systems where that rainwater sitting on the streets is separate from, you know, what may it collect around your house.
Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. For the people that don't think we're doing enough to stop this type of, you know, basement flooding, what exactly are we doing? And what progress are we making as a city? What are some of the things?
Well, that's why I was saying it's so important to call us right away, because immediately, we need to get out there. We pull manhole covers, and we check to make sure that the sewers are flowing, everything is working properly. After the rain event, we'll collect all the data, and then we'll see if there's neighborhoods where maybe there were multiple homes, and, you know, we'll go in there with a jet and a TV truck, and we'll clean those sewers and take a look at them and make sure that there's no obstructions or nothing's blocking them. So, and that's the follow-up work that we're doing right now.
Because sometimes we hear, oh, we're not doing enough, or, you know, we're not doing this or that.
And we also, you know, I think we spend something like $500,000 a year on preventative maintenance, TV and cleaning on our sewers. So we go through the city on a seven- or eight-year cycle, and we look at all of our sewers. And we clean them out to make sure that, you know, everything's working the best that it can.
How much was it we spent?
I believe it's about $500,000 a year.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Brian, when are we gonna have the map of the areas that had the flooded basements?
That's being put together right now, and I can share that with you.
Okay. And then, separate issue, you know, in terms of the two new pump stations, which were the hardest hit, right? We had literally nine inches of water in Veterans Memorial Park by the Masonic Station, and everyone saw what happened by Blue Goose, right? One of the things noticed the next morning, I was out there with building maintenance at Masonic, and the wet well that the pump is in, the water was still relatively high, based on where the floats were at. So as soon as, you know, Brandon from building maintenance lifted up the floats, there was a significant amount more water that could have been drained out of there and prepped for the next event. It was never gonna prevent that level of rain coming down in that area. But it's, have you guys checked that the new levels that are in those wet wells are kind of where they should be? Because this is probably the first big event that they've had.
Yeah, and we did discuss the calibration of that pump station right after that event, but I will double-check to make sure that that's been done, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, thank you.
Thanks.
I know you're out there if someone wants to talk to you, all right? Item three is audience participation on agenda item. Two-minute time limit to submit to the city clerk and to discuss an item on the agenda. Do we have any?
Yes, we have seven.
Thank you.
The first speaker is Steve Taflinger, a St. Clair-shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item Number Four.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Evening.
Item number four. My first comment is directed to our city attorney, Mr. Iry, and it refers in regard to the First Amendment to the ordinance that Ms. Coto and Ike cited in support of approval of the extension. I'm addressing this, excuse me, as there's a provision in the ordinance that if construction does not commence within one year of approval for special land use, which was August 21st, 2023, the approval becomes null and void. There's a provision in the ordinance that council can approve a one-year extension of the approval, which is what they would have had to have done last year. But there is no minutes attached in the package that says that that was actually taken and that was actually done. Separately, excuse me, on August 21st, it will have been two years since the special use was reviewed and approved by council. The ordinance states that construction must be completed within two years of approval, unless a longer period is requested by the applicant at the time the special land use request is reviewed. To my knowledge and recognition, that was never done. That review took place in August 21st. By council, I do not recall any requests for a construction period in excess of two years at that time, the time of the meeting for review and approval for special use request. I think there's a difference between the one-year requirement for commencing construction and the two-year period for completion of construction. And I'd like Mr. Iry to respond to that, if we can do that at a separate time, so we don't take up anybody's important time here. Secondly, the 24-101 Jefferson project was initiated in 2022. Three years later, what's the visible progress? Dirt piles covered with weeds and an abandoned shack that should have been torn down months or years ago. Neither item's doing anything to enhance the beauty of the mythical mile. Finally, with all due respect to previous council and planning commission approvals, this project continues to flounder. Is it because it's not financeable? By knowledgeable financing sources who are paid to understand the value of good business plans, thorough economic analysis, and proper better of project leadership. In short, this project's on a long walk to nowhere. Please vote no on the extension, so the city can begin to discuss building alternatives that fit in the master plan, i.e. two-story buildings.
Thank you.
That fit in with the neighborhood and well-enhance the beautiful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker is Karen Crouchman, a St. Clair-shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item Four.
I'm here to bring attention to the property across from my house on Ridgeway and Jefferson. Lately, they've had people cutting through the property that come onto Stevens and pull in that one drive there and cut right across the property, over the curb and down. This happens about four or five times a day. So it's kind of like against the law, isn't it? And it could cause problems. Plus, they're not doing anything to it. They only cut the grass when I complain, which I come down to city and complain at a regular basis. But this time, they cut it Saturday, and I think it's because of this council meeting. But usually, it's 12 inches high. And when the people come around to check my grass, if it's taller than a pop can, I can get a ticket. But do they get tickets? It's a question. Anybody know?
I can't answer that at this moment. I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Nobody knows if they get tickets?
Ma'am, I can't answer the question definitively or not.
Okay. Will I continue to get tickets if I don't cut my grass?
Well, 12 inches above the ordinance, so people perceive violations all the time.
I hope that they do, because they should have, for every property, like, there used to be one, two, three houses, a gas station, a party store, and another house. And that's a lot of houses. They could give a lot of tickets for every individual property, but it's not considered one now anymore. I'm not considered individual anymore, right?
Probably, yeah.
When are they gonna do anything with this?
Ma'am, we're working on that now, and we're trying to see what happens. So it's your chance to make the comments regarding this, this item.
Yeah. I don't like it.
All right.
You got that. I mean, who else would like it? Because I live right across from it, and I'll be looking up at a five-story building. I won't be able to see the sky anymore. So, being I've been in my house for 30, I mean, for 57 years, my vote should count more than theirs, because they don't even live there, along with a lot of the other people around here. And then I grew up in Stevens, so I was there for 18 years. I think that somebody should take some knowledge of not doing this kind of crap in our city. Put that stupid building on the lakeside, so it's not in a private neighborhood. Of course, we've been saying this for how many years? Nobody pays any attention, but.
Thank you.
That's my say.
Thank you.
The third speaker is Rick Zaremski, a St. Clair-shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item Four.
Good evening. Here we are, meeting again, two years later after the fact. At the end of May 2024, the state signed off on the property at 24-101 Jefferson. The property was remediated of all contaminants. I expected the condo developer to start clearing the land last summer in 2024. Why haven't they started? The first house on Stevens, west of Jefferson, has to be demolished, backfilled, and graded. Why haven't they started? Last summer in 2024, DTE was at the corner of property measuring for the power lines. DTE told me that they were waiting for the condo developer to start construction. DTE stated, why should they have to do all this work on the power lines if nothing's gonna get built? DTE is waiting for the condo developer to start construction. The condo developer has stated that they are waiting for DTE. There's a contradiction here. The condo developer stated that road construction on Jefferson is stopping them from bringing in construction equipment. The road project started this past March. What has the condo developer been doing since June of last year? Nothing. The condo developer can coordinate with the road construction contractor so that they can bring in their equipment. That is how commercial construction projects are run. How many more extensions does this condo developer need? It is too ambitious of a project for the property at 24-101 Jefferson. Maybe it's time to move on. Build something that blends in with the neighborhood, not something that towers over it.
Thank you.
The fourth speaker is Paula Zaremski, a St. Clair-shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item Four.
Thank you. This feels like Groundhog Day. Is Bill Murray gonna come out? Really? Come on. This is, all it is is Groundhog Day. The same thing is going on and on and on. And I think that Billy Preston put it, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. How can you extend nothing? They're asking for an extension. Extension of what? How do you extend nothing? What have they done? Nothing! How many years? Two, two and a half years? I would love to extend myself to nothing. Come on. How many times are you going to give them?
They can extend it for another 10 years. I'd be happy.
Yes. How many extensions are they going to get? They haven't done a thing. Now they're saying construction is in the way? The construction started how long ago? And this project started how long ago? How many chances are they going to get? Again, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. And that's what we have there on that corner, is a big fat nothing. Except for the geese, who happen to like to live over there, because there's a nice little water source, too, that they supply. And they like to live there, and that's what I would like to see living at that corner, is the geese. Not a big condo right here, and my house is right down here. Again, condo up here, five stories, my house, single story, right here. And another thing that I would like to bring up is I believe that not everybody on this council should vote on this. There is a council member who does own a property on my street, and I hope he would do the right thing and recuse himself from voting on this project, because he does have a vested personal interest in this condo project. Thank you.
Thank you.
The fifth speaker is Katie Maynard, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item four.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I live at 22824 Ridgeway Street. I'm speaking on Item four. So here we are again. The grass was cut and the field was cleared up, cleaned up Saturday night, as the sun was going down. So that is super positive. I've had this overwhelming feeling that-- Sorry, I'm nervous. I have had this overwhelming feeling that me, along with all of the other residents who took the time to write letters, send emails, and speak out in opposition of this condominium project at planning commission meetings and multiple city council meetings, were a bit naive. Naive to think that the people that were being, were going to be most affected by this project would be heard, and that we somehow mattered in this whole process. Your predecessors set a two-story height restriction on the west side of Jefferson, because this is a neighborhood of ranches, bungalows, and colonials. Let that sink in. This 40-unit, four-story-plus rooftop clubhouse party deck with balconies all around the building doesn't belong. It's unfortunate that the majority of you lack the critical thinking it takes to realize this. But this building is not in your front yard or in your neighborhood. It's not affecting your lives or the peaceful enjoyment and privacy that you enjoy in your homes. So I implore you that if you are determined to grant the extension of the special land use and the developers actually break ground on this project after all these years, I'm hoping that whoever's left sitting up there, somebody, anybody in the city, will actually monitor this development project and force it to completion in a timely manner. You get to make this decision to extend the special land use approval for us. We just get to endure it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Speaker six is Maudie Moody, Gross Point Woods resident, speaking on Agenda Item four.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maudie Moody with Lucido Real Estate. I represent Fair Cove Condos. And I just want to let you know that one of the reasons why they haven't been able to build was because DTE hasn't cut down the poles that are sitting on the footprint of the building. So they do have $95,000 already paid to DTE to move these poles. They have been rearranged, but they haven't been eliminated to be able to build. So everybody's been working diligently on this project. It hasn't been sitting stagnant whatsoever. I know you guys haven't seen progress, but behind the curtain, there's a lot going on to make the project happen. So, and I do have many, many buyers waiting to put deposits on the condos. So there is a need for it. So with that said, I just hope everybody has a little bit more peace of mind and we move forward with the project and get the extension. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Earl Hawkins, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on Agenda Item four.
Excuse me, my ears are plugged. I'm not hearing very well today, so, but I'll try and march through. Good evening. I have to say that for Mr. Iry, I don't understand this concept of trolling, that if the requirement is within one year and it expires, but you can reapply after a year. Why not five years? Why not 10 years? You know, I think this doesn't make any sense at all. Now, I have to say that 70% of condominiums industry-wide never get funded. And only the best developers with the most experiences are able to secure money. Now, currently, this developer is trying to do another development at 3,000 Sachibah Road in Waterford Township. So I would kind of conclude that he's probably stretched for money. And I think the idea of being successful in tapping traditional, at least, means of funding is very, very unlikely. We're in the fourth year now, and we're having opportunity costs. This is a pretty good piece of property that should be developed for the city. But the longer this goes on, the less likely we are to get a developer who's competent to do and creative enough to do a development that will actually work. Now, if he, this is not going to work, and I could go on and on. But to extend is really to pretend. This is not going to work. He's had a chance. He swung for the fences. He tried to squeeze the most money out of this, overbuild it, and he struck out, in my opinion. So that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Abby, that was it, right? Thank you. Item four is Planning Case. Request for extension of the special land use approval at 24-101 Jefferson. Denise Pike, CDI.
Mayor, council, good evening. The petitioner is the developer of the proposed multifamily residential project at 24-101 Jefferson. This property was granted a special land use and site plan approval by city council on August 21st, 2023. Under Section 48-561-J of the zoning ordinance, it states, "Following approval of a special land use request, a building permit may be obtained subject to review and approval of the engineering plans by the city engineer and review of construction plans by the community planning department. It shall be the responsibility of the applicant to obtain all other applicable city, county, or state permits prior to issuance of a building permit. If construction is not commenced within one year of approval, the special land use approval becomes null and void, and a new application for special land use review shall be required. Construction must be completed within two years of approval, unless a longer time period is requested by the applicant at the time the special land use request is reviewed. The applicant may apply to city council for a one-year extension. The petitioner is seeking the one-year extension of the special land use approval and project completion because of the fact that the relocation of utilities is not complete, even though the order was placed and paid for in February 2024. Here this evening, representing Rave's Construction, is Mark Marion. Mr. Marion?
Good evening. Good evening, council. Well, I don't know where to start with, but the way I look at it is excuses are excuses. Earl, who's asking why we haven't started, you know what? You plague our project in Waterford. That project did start. We got approved for 21 units. The council come to us and said, hey, what can we get more on this piece of property? And we worked with the council there, and we got 62 units on that parcel. So when you're saying the project is fundable from a bank, all the numbers got to work. He's exactly right. You know what? We couldn't build 21 units and make it work. We went to 64 units, or 62 units. Just been approved. You can look that up. That's on the paperwork, too.
Mr. Marion, you need to address the body. You need to address the body, not the people that have the right to speak in their two minutes. So address the body from henceforth. Do you understand?
Yes.
Thank you.
So if you want, if we want to look at that stuff, we can do that. All of our, all of our stuff is basically on Detroit Edison. I'm not making an excuse for Detroit Edison. I can't even get a written letter. In 2024, we did pay. We paid that money, 2924. I can't get a answer from them. They did half of the work out there. The power is still on the poles itself. The poles haven't even been moved. Construction has started. That's, that's construction of the road out there in the front. It has to be done. I'm willing to put off on that. I haven't met the requirements that we have here. I didn't ask for any ordinance changes or anything. You know what? I'm fine. I'm not making excuses up here. I got a problem with Detroit Edison, and there's no way for me to fix, period. I mean, we've tried. Denise, did they ask for us to get letters from Detroit Edison? I can't get a letter from them. They told us three months when we give them a $98,000 check. It's been a year and six months. I can't go change it. I can't go move it. I don't know what-- That's the issue. I'm not making any excuses for the roadwork, whatever. Yeah, it makes it hard, but whatever, you get through it. Most of the times, you know, every contractor that's going to go to that job, they're going to take a left on Stevens. I mean, they can't get out on right. So I'm not doing it to the neighbors. Some trucks are going to be going up and down there. Every contractor would be in there. If Detroit Edison would move their poles-- We rewrote the easement a year and eight months ago, nine months ago. We paid for it. We can't get nothing done. That's, that's exactly where it stands, man.
So, Mr. Marion, if you had gotten the poles and the line had been moved, you're telling me construction would have started?
We could have started, yes. And the numbers are a tough number to make. You know, everybody says, you know, numbers are numbers. The projects have to pencil out. So every project that we've done, when it comes in a row, we do it. We got 30 units of custom loft living or storages in Grand Blank. It took us over two years to get that approved. Two years of engineering. We got two and a half years invested in Waterford on 3,000 Sachibah. We just got that finalized. This has been going on for that long, too. I mean, from engineering to final and working with the cities and townships, we got to meet all the requirements that everybody asked for. I mean, this is not a simple project. If it was simple, everybody would be doing it. And it's sometimes quite frustrating on our side, no different than the public side.
Mr. Vitale, do you have a question?
So you have given a check to DTE?
Yeah, they--
I was told you had a copy of that check.
We have a copy of it.
It's on the city's website.
It's on the city's website, Denise.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in our, there it is right there. I mean, look, 2924.
How much spent on the remediation of the contaminated soil?
We got about $120,000 into that. And basically, that's on there, too. When you get into contamination soils and stuff, there's certain things you can do on that stuff. Basically, what is, what was contaminated there, we could have put in the parking lot. And we could have covered it, sealed it, and it would have been fine. We dug a hole 80 feet wide, or 80 feet long, 14 foot wide. We, 14 foot deep, and we took the contaminations out. We put it all compacted back in. It was the right way to do it, you know? We didn't try to save a nickel. We went full tilt. I mean, I-- If you would like, would everybody like to walk through that?
Yeah, briefly, sure.
There is a pole. I can't remove them wires. I can't even remove the low voltage. Once DTE cuts, they take theirs off. The low voltage has a contract with DTE and the easement. The easement has to be released from DTE to the low voltage, so they take that down. Then I can remove the poles. Can't even move forward on that. We can go to the next one, please. Okay, Norris, this is basically the stuff that, you know, we request the agreement needed on a site parking. This was the very first one. They approved this, everybody worked on this to get an approval on a side offset parking. We redid all of this, and we've kept our parking on our project. We don't have to have no agreement for parking and stuff. We meet all the requirements for parking. So this has been good on our side, too. Trying to make everything work.
Okay.
There, you know, everybody, that's the ordinance, is that we're supposed to say, or the agreements, you know, take in a right. We're going to be taking all sorts of lefts if we get into construction there. It's going to be terrible. We can put a, you know, right sign, take a right only. But with the construction that's going on, that's not an excuse. They're going to be going down both streets locked. It's just not going to work. Okay? Our traffic studies? We do our traffic studies according to what the city asks for. You know, a lot of times, a lot of people get into traffic study and say, we've played around with the numbers. We can't play around with the numbers. We get everything requested from the city. They give it to the traffic study guy, and we do a traffic study. They took three traffic studies, basically, on this. That's, that's the DTE. There. So February 18th, you know, DTE. They only did the ductwork and the stuff there. There's still, our electrical's still on the poles. The mains are. So since February 2025, DTE has-- This is basically the hiccup that we have. I know. That's what it is. We are a four-story building with a half-story. The way it is set up, you won't be able to see the people on the deck up on top. That's four and a half foot high, five foot high around there. There won't be, like, people partying over. And we went through this. This was very extensive at the very beginning. Make sure that is not what's going on here.
Okay. Mr. Lent?
Yep, so just to clarify for council, what we are here for, the special land use was approved on August 21st, 2023. As Denise had read in the ordinance, they had one year to commence construction. That construction was commenced when they started on all of the underground and the cleanup and remediation. However, what we are really here for today is they had two years to complete construction. As everybody here can see, construction is not going to be completed by August 21st of 2025. So that's when that two-year elapses. So today, we sit here, August 18th. They've got three days to be able to finish the project. We clearly see they're not going to be able to finish the project. The developer, as you guys have heard, has mentioned some of the hardships that they have felt they have experienced with DTE. And that is why we are here, and they are proposing to ask for a one-year extension on the construction, because as of August 21st, 2025, that two years would elapse, and the construction would not be completed. So, and as some gentlemen mentioned here, as part of their process, they did not ask for any more than the two-year. And our ordinance says that the developer may ask for that when they are creating and putting in their site plan. At that time, it was not asked for. I would just assume that they didn't probably figure they would have as much issues with the utilities and with DTE. However, they have had those experiences. So what we're here today is to either vote if we want to extend the project for the one year, which is what the ordinance allows for the project to be until August 21st, 2026, to have construction completed.
Mr. Karen? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. So, Mr. Marion, for the year after you wrote the check to DTE and February of this year, what communication did you have with DTE about having that work done?
Basically, once they started, they committed to, they actually said we'd be done within three months. So, we didn't bother them too much. Not at all.
Did you have an exact customer rep to talk to? Was there a direct contact you had to go to?
Yeah, we had plenty of them. We emailed, we've called, emailed, called. I tried to pull out some friends that were pretty tight with DTE and stuff. I couldn't, couldn't contact no one.
Okay. So, was one of the contacts Robert King?
I would have to look up on emails and office.
I think, because one of, the poles that you pointed out there, the lower lines, those are the telecom poles, right?
Correct.
They're, the telecom lines, not the electrical lines, right? And Robert King, in, in terms of, there's a, we have an email correspondence basically between Denise and DTE. And has in here, "I spoke to the customer today and he's heard nothing back from the telecom company, so I have no idea when that is getting relocated." So, I'm wondering who was Robert King talking to as the customer?
I don't know. If, what did he email, where did the email go?
It was between Ms. Pike and Robert King at DTE Energy.
Oh, then it didn't come to us. We have talked to the low voltage guys, too.
So, you've talked to the telecom companies?
Yes.
And did they give you any commitment on when those would get moved?
What's that?
Did they give you any commitment when they, when those would get moved?
I spoke on that previously, that we would, they said they would have to have their stuff done with DTE. DT, DT, DTE has the blanket easement over that. That's what I've been told. So, I can't pull them off. I can't get an answer from DTE. And I can't answer telecom either. So, the emails, one other party that was, that we're very involved with, they put out the calls to, some are very high in DTE. No response. It's been over six months. No response. None.
In terms of the site plan...
Yep.
Having, starting construction with one year of the site plan. This is actually a question from Ms. Pike. Basically, what we, because this was supposed to be an agenda item before and it got pulled because it was going to be an extension on that clause.
Right.
But it got pulled because it was decided to use the DTE work counting as construction in terms of meeting that requirement in that part of the ordinance, correct?
There were two things that, that we considered start of construction or start of activities that would lead to construction. That was the environmental cleanup and then the DTE.
Which was required to get site plan approval, right?
They had to have the closure report, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and then the DTE. Do we do that for anybody else?
In terms of?
Using other people's construction costs or projects that aren't related to the actual site work. Because basically, because they can't even start the site work yet in terms of what their site construction would be because they don't have permits yet because they haven't paid for those yet.
Correct.
Right. So, but in, I think in most projects that we've dealt with, I dare say all, because I'm not aware of any other case like this, that the criteria to start the one-year onsite construction is after you get permits, you start that construction, and then the full construction within two years is a special land use window unless more time was asked for.
Correct.
And I'm guessing, since I think that ordinance was written before any of us were on council, even any of us thought of being on council, that one-year extension was really based on if, as construction was going, something else happened and they needed just a little bit more time. Not a one-year extension and they haven't even started construction yet. So, I, I think we're reading, realize what the ordinance says and they can ask for a one-year extension. But from the intent of it, it wasn't of, hey, that construction hadn't even started yet or even permitted yet. So, I, I think in terms of one of the residents, it's stated of maybe a council denial will force a re-scope of the project, something that can be done and worthwhile to that corner and that intersection. So, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rubelo?
Tough one. Tough question. Tough for the residents that are across the street and down the street. And I mean, I, I get it. It all makes sense. We visited this before, okay? In fact, just, I think, an hour before the meeting, I had a chance to talk to Dr. Hawkins to have him air out any of his, anything else that we may have not got out of that letter, okay? So, I do understand. I'm a little shocked about the DTE thing holding you guys up. And that's a tough one to beat, okay? Because I know a couple of, maybe Chris, I think he's had run-ins with DTE, not, not delivering the package.
Your residents have.
Huh?
Your residents have.
The residents have. So, look, this was, this is very, it's very clear to me, okay? I, I wanted to hear some different information. The bill, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Mark.
Mark, I'm not here to put you through a, you know, a question and answer and try to, and try to, you know... First of all, the first thing I'd say is, A, thanks for taking interest and even wanting to come to St. Clair Shores and building something like this. I have talked to builders, and I remember talking to the builders back when this was first brought to us. The planning commission had okayed this, correct? Okay. So, and I remember talking to some of the builders, saying housing like this is needed, is being looked for in St. Clair Shores. I mean, I've just, it's, listen, I know it's not the popular thing if you, if you live across the street. I get it. But just, I get it, okay? And I get what the residents, I, I get the whole thing, okay? I have to look out, though, for what I think is best in entirety for an interior area. You mentioned the Nautical Mile. You mentioned the restaurants on the Nautical Mile. They need people down there, too, to have a thriving business. And I, and I get that. I've talked to plenty of them. So, you have sunk in over, look, is it about two hundred and eight thousand dollars? Is that, did I add that upright?
All of that, because you gotta do your engineering, your planning.
And you have, and I'm not considering arguing about your business plan and things like that. You know what you need and you know what you, you know, what breaks even and what's worth it. So, I'm not going down that road with you. Figure you've done this before. You know what's going on. Okay. So, I'm not going to be that guy that does that. You cleaned up the property, too, on top of what was underneath that ground, which was a sort of a big deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've got a giant Jefferson project sitting in front of you right now. And that, that's tough. That's tough for any business that's even open right now, okay? They're having a tough time. I get that, too. I get how that can slow you down. If we stop the project, if we stop this tonight, you're going to have to go back and do what with your financing? How does that work? You start all over again?
Yes.
And you may lose them. I, I'm just guessing. Is this how this stuff works?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I know it's not popular with the people that are sitting in here right now, but I have to look out for the bigger picture, too, okay? And listen, I'm sorry, you guys. That's just how I, that's, to me, a wonderful project for anything on the Nautical Mile. This is a, this, this housing is needed. I don't think there's anybody that can, can say that that's not needed. You just have to talk to some of the people that do this type of stuff. So, how many traffic studies?
Three. I believe there was three.
Okay. So, you haven't exactly been doing nothing, okay? I would take it. Okay. All right. Well, I'll tell you what, you guys. I think it's good for the city of St. Clair Shores. I know it's not good for some of the people that might live across the street. I get it. Dr. Hawkins, I did give you your time to, to, you know, to let me hear some different information. So, at this point, I mean, we can go back and forth and that's fine, but I'll move to approve the one-year extension to the special land use at twenty-four one zero one until August eighteenth, twenty twenty-six. And then I think you have to understand after that, it could be anything, okay? Just so.
Moved by Mr. Rubelo.
Hold on. Wait, one second. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We're not going to get in it. We're not going to do that. That's not how we, we run these meetings. So, you've made a motion. I don't even know if there's support.
Support.
Ms. Burgess has made support for the motion, which is to approve the one-year extension of the special land use. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Few questions. Looking at the copy of the presentation we have received in our packet to prepare for this meeting, the presentation up there has some different points in it. Where are the differences and why were they made in between us receiving this on Friday and the version that's being, I'm seeing for the first time now?
That, that's one of the original ones that was actually approved.
No, the presentation, not the picture. The presentation itself, the PowerPoint.
Oh, you've never, you haven't seen that one?
They gave us some version of it within our packet.
Oh, okay.
Watching it being clipped through tonight, there are differences. I'm not sure if I caught all the differences, but there are differences. For example, we left that summary page. There's differences in the timeline. The, the ones I just caught, again, looking at, the check is on a different page. There's a different point on there that's not in here in the first thing. That's the same. And the timeline in terms of the planning commission conditions, we have twelve. I believe there were eight up there, and those were just the ones I have a hard time seeing up there with my glasses on. So, there could be other differences, but I noticed those from the presentation I read at home in preparation for this meeting. Why was the presentation keep being revised?
I tried to clean it up a bit. I apologize. I didn't even know the PowerPoint went to you. And I tried to, I tried to scale it down, tried to make it cleaner.
Yeah, because we had, like, twelve conditions on here, and again, this goes back to February twenty twenty-three. We say, "The planning commission recommended with the following conditions," which twelve listed up there had eight. I mean, which one? I'm just curious because it's hard to know. Was the accurate representation the one being shown tonight or the one that we had in preparation for this meeting?
It's actual what you have. I just tried to clean up some of the stuff that didn't even matter on some of the...
Like, twelve conditions became eight conditions? I mean, it's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to. Yeah, we have twelve conditions and that's eight conditions. It's just, it's a little jarring.
You can compare it to the ones there, the ones that I took off.
I really don't want to compare them. I, I read the packet in preparation for this meeting. I kind of expect the proper, the presentation being shown tonight to be the same. Or we would get the copy of the revised one, and this wouldn't be desirable because it wouldn't allow us to have much time for preparation prior to the meeting, not seeing it for the first time, because I, that was just some of the discrepancies I caught. There still could be more. Again, I'm trying to listen to the presentation, read my packet, compare it, listen, do it all in tandem. The fact I caught five of them is pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I have Mr. Lent answer, but I mean, I presume that CDI will make sure they meet the conditions. Whatever's put up there.
No, I, I know. I'm just, in terms of knowing what I have in front of me to prepare, it's a little jarring to see different information presented because, again, I don't know if that's what is accurate. I mean, that's why we get the materials prior to the meeting to allow ourselves enough time to review and reflect upon them. So, anyway, that was just something I noticed going through this. I was, thought was interesting. So, this presentation came from you guys?
Our office.
I voted against the special land use two years ago. I went through, I think, a pretty lengthy explanation, citing the ordinance, citing the master plan, applying it. And in my viewpoint, there was no reason to grant the special land use two years ago. So, I will not be voting to extend it, something I think should have been granted two years ago. So, I'm going to not go through everything and I will just incorporate the reasons, the myths, I think, properly reflect and cite those again by incorporation. And I will not be voting for this extension tonight. Do you guys owe any money to the city currently?
No.
Because the BSA says it's like eighty grand for the permits. Denise is nodding.
I can, I don't owe it right now. If I choose to pull the permit right now, and here's the difference, too, of time element with the blueprint. I mean, if I pull the permit and I'm another six months, I lose six months of a one-year contract, of building permit. So, I think on our side, it was better to be able to get started or go and pull the permit when I know I can put a shovel in the ground. And that's just a discussion or agreement that we had with our, our group, saying, why go spend it? We already spent all of this money. I can't do a darn thing right now until DTE. And if, if, once we do that, we have to pull that permit. We, that's the only thing that gets us started.
Okay. I'm just going off with the BSA currently says is owed by the company. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Can you go back to the slide that has the power poles on it? Okay. It's a little hard to see there. Can you zoom in on, choose, like, that picture on the left and zoom in? Okay. So, there's still primary power on the site. I don't even know why we're talking about telecom lines.
I understand. It just...
I, I watched it, too, because they're correct. They do own property on that street. The odd thing about that is, by the way, in terms of conflict of interest, would be if I felt that this property would denigrate the neighborhood and I voted against it based on my own interests. The funny thing is, is that I don't think this is going to denigrate the property. I think it's a boost for the city. So, I suppose it's kind of a trick bag to try to accuse me of something here because if I thought it was bad, I would vote against it. I don't. And I've watched DTE come out, do some work on this project, and I thought, oh, thank God. Finally getting started. It's going to get done. They put the new poles in. And then they disappeared. And then I've seen them come out, sit in their trucks, smoke cigarettes, and leave. And the fact of the matter is, you've still got primary power on that site. I highly recommend no one touch those wires. It doesn't work for DTE. Not that you couldn't go to jail for taking telecom wires down, too. But we're a long way from even having that discussion. Yeah, I can see why I didn't pull permits. If I was counting on DTE to start a project, I wouldn't pull them either. Because all you're going to do is burn your time waiting for these guys to show up. And we all know how DTE treats residents. We've been after them and after them. And here's the other thing I don't understand. Everyone says, well, you haven't done anything on the site. Well, the last time, when this was in front of us in twenty twenty-three, the big concern was, well, this is a contaminated gas station. You can't do anything with this, God forbid, this land. You remediated all that. I guess that's the gratitude for cleaning it up and doing that on your own dime. And the fact of the matter is, I don't think anybody here is, you know, Mr. Marion's banker. So, really, it's none of their business whether he can bring this, he has bonds and things like that that he's got to pay for the city. If he doesn't make any money on it, I mean, that's his problem. But the fact of the matter is, you've now got a cleaned-up site. You've got a canceled check that you're not drawing interest on for work that's incomplete. I mean, I don't know. Maybe you should see counsel to sue DTE. But, you know, then again, they have more money than any of us because they're unregulated monopoly. Excuse me, regulated by friends of the governor who was appointed to regulate them. Anyways, I mean, this is the fact of the matter. You've got construction. You can't drag semis up and down Stevens. You can't drag them up and down Ridgeway. Thank you for not doing that. So, you've got plenty of reasons that I think you haven't started the construction. And in fact, I think it's completely legitimate to say, in terms of cost, you have started construction. I don't put over two hundred thousand dollars into something I don't intend to do anything with. And I thought it was funny, too, that somebody said that the city can discuss building new projects. In other words, pole is special use and the city can discuss building, with who? We don't build anything. We count on private developers. And what kind of message does that send to a private developers to say, we gave this guy permits, DTE still hasn't gotten off their butt, he invested two hundred thousand dollars into the site, and now we're not going to extend it? If I was a private investor, I wouldn't want to do business with the city that voted like that. Based on what? You cleaned up a PowerPoint? Or somebody doesn't like... cleaned up a PowerPoint? Or somebody doesn't like the view? I mean, we discussed all that. That's not even... So yeah, obviously, I'll be a yes on this.
Ms. Burgess.
Just kind of a side note, just because of some of the attention that I've been hearing about the property and everything, the grass cutting, the piles of dirt out there, maybe during the meantime, this could be made to be, look a little bit better for the residents. Make sure that that grass is cut in a timely manner, and maybe the piles of dirt cleaned up.
Yes, ma'am. We do have a contract on cutting, and it's been tough. We have, we have received, if you don't notice, and we have paid buffer grass cutting, gutters cleaning. We had, we've had that. And we try to deal without it, but you know, counting on someone to cut a lawn. I don't have a lawnmower to go over there and cut it. We hire a service, you know? I apologize for that. When he shows up, he shows up. And then he starts yelling at him, he shows up.
I get it. We all deal with things like that.
I can remove the dirt, fix the silt fence.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Just to be clear, I am not voting against this because they quote cleaned up a PowerPoint. Those were separate questions. I'm voting against this just as I stayed for the same reasons I voted against it two years ago prior to the PowerPoint or anything else existing.
Correct. Mr. Rabello.
Captain, closing, you've got a, one of the, I'm not sure who said it, but if you've got a point person between when the project gets going and, if you could send somebody, if they have questions or, or something's not going right, complaints, I can tell you, brought it, somebody brought up Chris. That guy, that guy may be your biggest fan, but I'll tell you what, and I shouldn't say your biggest fan, you know, he's voting yesterday, he said, but I'll tell you what, these guys have an advocate on their street that if it's getting nasty and dirty and things like that, and Chris Vitale, you probably wouldn't be so nice to you the next time he sees you. So, and that's a good thing. So you have an advocate on the street too. And again, like I said, if there was a point person between, I'm not sure who said that, Mrs. Maynard, or, you know, because you're living with the neighbors and stuff too.
And that's why we said we have neighbors. When we start a project, we always notify everybody. We go to house to house. We give a card out. If there's complaints, I ask them to deal with us, you know, to save a little headache from the city. Every house or subdivisions we've done or things, you know, we go to the customer or our neighbor and say, hey, you know, this is us. Call us instead of have to. We try very hard on that.
Mr. Karen.
Yeah, question for Mr. Eri. So the ordinance has that council's allowed to grant a one-year extension. What happens a year from now? Because we know, it's obvious, the construction's not going to be done, you know, maybe half done at that point. If they already used the one, one-year extension, what happens?
There's an argument that can be made with respect to the language of the ordinance that another extension could be requested and approved.
Despite it says a one-year extension?
I'm not saying that there isn't an argument that can be made both ways. A one-year extension, if the intent was that it could only be one-year extension, it could say only a one extension is permitted, or only a one-year extension. But does the word "a" mean that it can only be one extension? That's a matter of interpretation at this juncture. And so, as I say, that particular word "a" is up for some debate.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
And actually, John, when you were talking earlier, you know, that none of us were around when this ordinance was created, there are a lot of ways you can interpret that language. There's a lot of vagueness, I would say. I did talk to Mr. Eri on that exact same thing. It doesn't say only, it doesn't say a. What is that? So I do think one of the things that we do need to look at is potentially cleaning up that language to make sure, not just for this project, but for many others and some others that have occurred as well, that we clean up that language and put something a little bit more concrete.
And probably also the site plan language as well, site construction language.
Yes. Yeah, and it's fixed.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, seconded by Ms. Burgess to approve the one-year extension of the special land use at 24101 until August 18th, 2020, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Four to two, it passes. Okay, thank you.
See you next year.
Can I have your phone number so I can call you when you don't come to grab the reminder?
You can work on outside if you don't mind, Mrs. Crouchman, Ms. Crouchman, right up there. That'd be great if he'll give it to you. Item five, is request to amend the city ordinance signs limiting turn. Chief Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in November of 2023, the planning commission approved the site plan for beyond juicerie and eatery at 28801 Harper's. They recommended that no right turns be allowed from that parking lot onto the side street. In December of 2023, city council approved that site plan as well. It also recommended that there be no turns allowed from that lot onto the side street. This is consistent with other businesses, and it helps to reduce traffic onto the side street. So I'm recommending that the city ordinance be amended to include that prohibition of turns onto side street from the parking lot.
Ms. Rusi.
Yeah, remembering this discussion, it was recommended by the planning commission. We did pull it from the approval of site plan, given it's not a condition that the property owner petitioner can do on their own. It requires the amendment of the ordinance, and that requires obviously a recommendation coming to this body to act upon. So that's why we removed it, not because we disagreed with it, but because procedurally it made sense. Not just made sense, it has to be done this way versus leaving it as a condition up to the petitioner. So with that, I would move to approve the ordinance amendments as presented.
Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Rabello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Item six is the request to approve a resolution authorizing the 2025 capital improvement bonds.
The resolution authorizing the 2025 capital improvement bonds is required for the issuance of the bonds to finance a portion of the costs associated with acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new police headquarters facility and a new fire central station. Along with all related site improvements, specifically the bonds will fund up to $5 million of the project costs not covered by the ARPA grant funds or other available resources. Current estimates in your packet, the city will only require less than $4.4 million of the $5 million allowed by council. The resolution is based on bond specific preparation by MFCI LLC and the city's financial advisor. Both are in attendance, and both will be addressing councils any questions they may have. In addition, the resolution authorizes designated city officials to take all necessary actions to issue, sell, and deliver the bonds and delegates authority to award the bonds to the city manager, assistant city manager, and the finance director. I'd like to bring up our two individuals. If there's any questions council may have.
How many steps are we at? Is there one more step after this? Mr. Lent?
This...
Hello, Pat.
Good evening. Pat McGow here, bond counsel to the city. This is the second action in the financing process for the issuance of the bonds. This would be the final action by the city council. If approved tonight, that would then authorize the city manager and administration to move forward with the bond sale. So just to recap, the bonding process, obviously, you've been working on these, these projects for a long time. Back in April, the city council approved a notice of intent resolution, which indicated an intent to issue bonds up to $5 million to pay for part of the cost of the project. There was a notice published, referendum period, and so we're now coming back for the resolution to authorize the bonds in an amount not to exceed $5 million. And again, as the city manager indicated, if approved, the city would move forward with a bond sale. We are looking at a competitive bond sale, similar to the way the city has done other bond issues and projects, where we'd receive bids and award to the lowest true cost bidder. And again, that process would be over the next couple of months, and actions taken by the administration to make that bond sale happen.
Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, so I've been voting against going into debt for these projects. I'll be doing the same thing, but just more procedural questions. I did ask your colleague the last time they were up here, in terms of our charter states that we can't go out for a bond unless there's a vote of the electors. But he did reference the Municipal Finance Act that does say for capital improvement items, we can.
Yes.
And, so I did look that up, did print it out. It is correct. We can, so. But other municipalities, for example, I believe Roseville, they went to a vote for capital for 20 million a couple of years ago. Livonia this past August went for 140 million. Roseville's passed, Livonia's did not. So what do you know in terms of other communities, whether they're deciding whether to just do it via vote of council, or to go to electors to get that approval?
Yeah, good question. So in the world of municipal bonds, there's two types of bonds issued by the city where the city's pledging its full faith and credit. One is one that's approved by the voters, which then authorizes the city to levy a special debt millage to pay the bonds. And the other is this process, which is the more common one, and this is the way the city has done the last half dozen financings, which is, if you don't go to the voters, you're not allowed to raise taxes above your existing limit. So the cities that have taken bond proposals to the voters, or school districts, a better example, every school bond gets voted because they need to levy a debt millage to be able to pay the debt service.
Okay.
So you're right. Livonia and Novi was one that passed. They needed to levy a debt millage. The reason...
Livonia failed, Novi passed.
I'm sorry, Novi passed. Yeah, thank you. That was one I worked on. So, I'm not saying it had anything to do with me, but I was watching on election night. But the reason that we didn't do that here is because the city does not intend to raise taxes in order to pay the debt service on the bonds.
To put a separate levy out there to cover it, but they were. So that was the main difference between those.
Exactly. And so this is going to be paid from existing resources that the city has in existing taxing.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think, other question for Mr. Lent in terms of, you know, we have the $5 million figure in here. Past meetings, we talked about that we may only need to borrow four. In this memo, it's now up to 4.4 million. So what changed from the 4 million number stated at a prior meeting to the 4.4 million number that's in this meeting's memo?
Yeah. So attached to this is also the ARPA project funding, which kind of says the money that we're receiving from ARPA, the money that has been kind of worked at and allocated through the budget process or work study sessions of using DLEF, storm sewer, water, utility, parking, court building fund, opioid money. And if you kind of track down of what that number was, it's at 4.166. The most recent one prior to this, if you remember, we actually did include it in our budget process, where we were looking to keep some money, but it was recommended actually to pull it out of the budget. So that money was pulled out. The only thing that actually stayed in the budget was the $144,000 lease payment that we are utilizing for St. Lucy's. That is the money up here that you can see lease payment in 26 budget, and then also some fire cost and some of the past budget or police cost.
Okay.
So because that was exited out of there and not put into the budget, you can kind of see the remaining unfunded amount right now is the 4.166071.
All right. So the last sheet, right?
Yes.
This is from the prior meeting?
No, this is actually a newer, updated one.
I printed this from a prior meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the, we had capital 26, $500,000. So that got pulled out, right?
Yes.
And that's just the lease payment. So that additional $400,000 you added to, that's the main difference.
The main difference. But I also, if you looked at the top, to the interest, we've been very fortunate. The interest rates have stayed high, so we've actually received a little bit.
Actually, we're not fortunate interest rates stay high.
Sorry, you're right. I mean...
It's a double edged sword.
It's a double edged sword. The money that we're receiving on our money that we have invested right now in the bank has done better than what, so that's why it hasn't really been a direct correlation of 500,000 added 500,000.
Got it. Okay.
Yep.
And timing wise, if this approves, when does this go out on the market?
So the timetable would be, if approved, we would then go to the rating agencies to request ratings. The bond sale would be sometime in mid to late September, and a closing then in early to mid October. So the interest rate would be set on the sale date, which I think we're talking now about September 24th, somewhere in that timeframe.
Should there be consideration not to go that aggressive of a timetable, considering there's a 98% chance the rates are going to get cut in September?
So...
Per market predictions?
I will say one thing on that, and then I'll let Steve talk about that. I will say that everybody, when they talk about doing bonds, is very attentive to what happens at a Federal Reserve meeting. And I will say that when the Federal Reserve raises rates, that is a short-term rate that doesn't necessarily mean that long-term rates on bonds will go up by the same amount. There is a correlation.
Or we're hoping to go down.
Or go down.
We're hoping for a cut, right? Everyone's anticipating a cut.
They move in similar directions, but not exactly the same.
Okay.
But the other, but the other important point on why we don't, you know, try to wait for Fed actions, is that if everybody thinks that rates are going to go down, the market has already built that in. So we very often see that the Fed will make a move to cut rates, and rates on bonds don't go down because the market assumed that the Fed was going to cut rates. So the closer we get to a Fed meeting, and the closer people have indications on what they think is going to happen, the bond market makes bets on what the Fed's going to do. And we see that in the municipal bond market as well. So I would say that it's not necessarily the case that when the Fed takes action to lower rates by a quarter or a half, that you see a quarter or a half percent dip in long-term bond interest rates the next day. That's not how it works. But I'm going to throw it over to Steve, the financial advisor, to talk a little bit about rates and where he sees them and what he thinks that impact is.
Good evening, council. So today, or I'm sorry, as of market conditions today, it's looking at about 4.3%. That can change very drastically depending on what happens in the financial markets. And realistically, it doesn't, as Pat said, it's not always going to follow exactly what the Fed decision is in the, in September. And ultimately, it's, we want to have a good preliminary official statement to get in front of the rating agencies and kind of get that ball rolling. So when it comes time to sell the bonds, we have everything in order and, you know, ready to get to the market.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rabello?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Pat, you're like the bond guy, man, right? I mean, you've got, I always looked at you as a pretty smart guy. And so who will you be in contact with at our, from our office?
So we've been working on this with the city manager, assistant city manager, finance staff, to put together the documents that need to go into the rating presentation.
And these are perfect examples, right? These types of buildings that we're putting up as we speak, perfect candidates for municipal bonds. I mean, this is why they have municipal bonds.
Correct.
And I'm not exactly sure, I don't really look at it as going into debt. I look at it as somebody gave us $21 million, and it cost 26. And I think we got a darn good deal to put up two brand-new buildings from the ground up. We would have never got that from ARPA if we didn't have ARPA. And I'm lucky that I would live in a city, that we made a nice decision to do something like this. And it's good for the people that work there. It's good for the people that live there. So again, somebody gives me $21 million out of something that might cost around 25. I'm just rounding numbers off here. I think we got a pretty darn good deal. Okay? And with that, I will move to approve the enclosed resolution authorizing the 2025 capital improvement bonds.
Moved by Mr. Rabello.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Vitale. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Questions? I guess maybe more for the finance guy, and I'm glad you guys are here today. I guess I'm going to deviate a little bit from Councilman Karen and suggest maybe something else for this. I don't know. But first off, let's, we don't know what the rate's going to be. You say it's 4.3% today. The resolution says up to 6% interest, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So let's say we, do we know how long of a period these bonds will be for it to be paid off? Is it going to be 10 years, 15, 20, 20 years?
Currently, it's a 20-year amortization.
So with a 20-year amortization, let's say, let's say it's today a 4.3% interest, or let's say it's up to the 6% that the resolution's contemplated for 20 years with the principal payment, with the interest payment. How much is this? How much is this, let's say we do go out just for the 4.4, not the 5, how much is that 4.4 million going to cost us over 20 years, given the interest and given the other payments we'd have to be making?
It would, currently, right now with the rates, sorry, I'm going to have to do a calculation, I should have-
No, it's okay. I, we haven't talked about that. How much is this 4.4 million going to cost us? And that's assuming it's 4.4 and not 5, because the resolution again authorizes up to 5 million.
Correct. Sorry, yeah, that's going to take me just a little bit.
It's perfectly okay if it takes a minute. I think we need these numbers to make an informed decision.
It was approximately 6.676 million for a $5 million deal. And-
Okay, hold on. So is that, how much in interest is that? Is that, that's your question, correct?
Yeah, how much in interest? How much is this going to be paying? How much are we going to be paying to have this 4.4 million now?
He just did it for, did you do it for 5?
Yeah, that was for 5.
Okay, it's close. But what was the number again?
Yeah, it was, sorry, give me one moment. It was 6.76 million. So that would be approximately 1.76 million dollars in interest.
For 20 years, yes.
For 20 years, okay. I'm just, if this is quote, quote, I understand, we have the buildings being built right now. You can look out the window and see it, you can go down the street and see it, we have to pay this off somehow, right? Instead of doing the bonds, why don't, given it's 4, we're at 4.4, we have a rainy day fund, we have a millage on the ballot right now that's going to be bringing in 4.9 million, 4.9 mills if it passes, which is additional money than what it's bringing in now, why don't we just internally finance this and save ourselves some of the carrying costs and the interest money with this? Instead of putting ourselves in debt for 20 years, and having 20 years, it's 4.4 million. It's like, you know, we have internally financed other projects and have one fund, own another fund, just to save ourselves from having to go through this process.
That'd be, that would be round numbers, probably like 28% of our fund balance. That's significant.
But paid, paid back less than, yeah, but paid back.
Sorry. Okay. We also, the money that is in our fund balance, we also receiving interest money on that as well. So it is kind of a double, so it's not necessarily going to be 1.7. Because if you deplete your fund balance by $6 million, or 5, sorry, $5 million, we use his number, $5 million, that's $5 million of no interest that we would be receiving for that exact same 20 years, which we would have to do the interest on what we're receiving today.
Oh, we would be paying it back for a lot less than 20 years.
You would, but you would be losing that potential because we would be losing that 5 million right from the get-go. So we would be receiving $5 million if we didn't utilize that money from our fund balance of interest for that exact same 20 years as well, because that $5 million would be gone and spent. So it's not, I wouldn't say necessarily a fair assessment to say it's costing us 1.7, because we would be depleting our fund balance in case there was any emergency. Plus, we would not be receiving any interest from that $5 million. And I mean, I won't know off the top of my head on what we're receiving on that 5 million, but there is an offset where it's, you're talking more, it's much smaller naval number than 1.7.
Right, I'm just, I'm, we have the millage on the ballot specifically for police and fire operations. It's going from, we're asking instead of the 4.4 currently is now 4.9. If that passes, it's three years, what's the additional amount, additional amount of money that's bringing in compared to what it brings in now? What's that 0.5?
1.1, you're asking right off the top end, so we're doing the best we can. 1.1 million?
Yeah, so that pretty much, that pays off pretty much all of it in three years.
Yeah, well, we have, yeah, we have also, we're going to probably, we're off staff costs, we'll have additional costs too. So I mean, we'll have that.
It just seems like to go 20 years, and that's why the 20 years in debt is in debt, 20 years in debt and paying 1.7 million to get 4.4 million, that I don't, I think we have other ways to get that and to complete these projects, because we do have, we do have to pay for these projects.
Well, I'm sure we have other ways. That's one way you're doing, but we aren't counting the fact that what he's just, the city manager said, the lost money that would be invested. So that has to be accounted for.
Well, that would be three years, about. Let's say five years.
Why would it be five years?
Well, that's the three-year millage.
You're just taking all that new millage, and I'm not sure that's correct to do that.
Okay, and that's why we probably should have discussed these things prior to putting the millage on the ballot. But it's a little late for that now. I'm just trying to, 20-year debt for 4.4 million, just-
Well, we put the court on for 20 years. I think it's the Section 108, the Section 108 lease over at the, at the senior center, that's-
Right, but the court, we have the decedent court fund paying, you know, that we knew we were already paying into.
Well, we're still paying debt on it. I mean, we didn't, we don't, so we're still paying debt. I mean, we're still, there's still costs there, so that's a 20 years. The Section 108 was, was 20, that's the last two, unless I'm missing one, that we've, we've done all 20 years on.
Just suggesting some alternatives, because 4.4 million isn't in the grand scheme of things compared to-
Yes.
-what we have. Doesn't seem like we need to go outside for that for 20 years. We do have to get these buildings paid for, I know that.
Mr. Vitale?
Ms. Rusi does make a good point. We've retired other debts early. I know that we've paid bonds early.
I think we have refinanced-
We did with Marina.
Well, the Marina's a whole different, that's not the case. We've refinanced it multiple times in the earlier, so that's not the case. I think we have refinanced debt over the time, water sewer bonds, we have done those. I'm not sure we've paid them off early, Mr. Vitale, but we certainly have refinanced them to get a lower interest cost, as we did actually the Marina. So I'm not sure if we paid them off early, but we certainly have refinanced them at a savings because of higher interest rates.
Well, let's just say this. I mean, first of all, I suppose if interest rates did go down, and I think they'd have to go down substantially to make it worth the effort, but we theoretically could refinance, right?
Yes. So the way this works is that generally municipal bonds are not able to be paid off for the first 10 years, so that the market and the investors know that that instrument is going to be out there for 10 years.
Okay, that was going to be my next question.
So about 10 years is the point at which you can refinance. But to your comment, and again, if rates go down, then you borrow at a lower rate and you see those savings. But even if rates stay the same, now that 20-year debt is now only 10. So the shorter term makes the rates lower, even if interest rates are the same. So there's still a possibility to refinance, even if rates stay the same, because now you're only incurring debt for 10 years instead of 20. So the answer is that yes, and that's something that the city always does, looks at opportunities to refinance if it saves money. We've done that on a number of occasions, most recently in 2021, and that's something that commonly happens as those bonds get near that early call date. And if you did have additional funds, you could pay down additional debt at that time as well.
Will this be our highest interest rate bond?
Uh, yes, it will be.
Okay. So we could dedicate money aside for the next 10 years, I suppose to retire it 10 years early?
Certainly.
And we could talk about that during budgeting.
Could.
So I think that's a good point. Food for thought, we'll put it that way. But for now, I know you need the approval to sell these bonds. Is there a motion in there?
There is. A motion by Mr. Rabello, supported by you, Mr. Vitale, to-
It's been a while.
Where were you at?
To approve the resolution authorizing the 2025 capital improvement bonds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I said aye.
I'm sorry.
They have to be paid for.
Yes, ma'am. Five to one, it passes. Thank you. Then you'll proceed with that, right?
Thank you.
Item seven, the 7A will come back at a future meeting. 7B is to request approval for the bid for the library shelving relocation. The library director, Stephanie Fair. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So today I'm here to talk about shelving relocation for our library renovation, in which the shelving units throughout the whole library and the collection, which consists of over 111,000 items, needs to be temporarily relocated so that we can start this project. During construction, the current layout would have the main part of the adult services moved into children's area, in which it would be housed during what we would consider Phase 1 of that project. Once Phase 1 is completed, the current youth services area would be removed of all shelving and placed within the main portion of the library, with some of it going to its resting place or its final location, and some of it being squeezed into that main location so we can complete that Phase 2 of the children's area. Once that is completed, then the adult services fiction and large print will then be placed in its final place upon completion of that project. So I reviewed proposals from both the general moving companies and one specialized vendor in library relocations. And while the general movers do offer standard transport services, the library relocation specialist brings essential expertise in providing and preserving the shelf order, utilizing specialized equipment to protect the shelving units, and minimizing disruption to library operations. Given the size and complexity of this project and limited capacity on internal staff to be able to manage such a process, a library-specific mover is the best fit for this project. Additionally, our architect services of PlayPlus recommended a mover who can do one of the following besides moving. Also procure and construct new shelving if we do go that route, or modify the existing shelving in the library that we currently have. And out of all the bidders, that bid for the product, we only have one vendor that meets that requirement, which is Library Design Associates. So at this time, I would take on any questions that Council has, but my recommendation would be for Library Design Associates to take on the project.
So the difference, the 43, 40, $43,000 more, right?
Correct.
Roughly. You, you don't feel a preferred will, this, I guess, will be a nightmare? Is that, is that what?
I would put that mildly, mildly nightmare. I did do reference checks on, on both. The scope of projects that Preferred Moving had prior to us does not include a library of our size. They've only moved two public school libraries, in which one of the projects, they removed the shelving, which was already on wheels, into a different location, so they only had to saran wrap the books so they didn't fall off of the shelves, and then moved those shelving units back in. And the second project required the librarian to remove all the items off of the school library shelves, box them, and they disassembled and reassembled the shelving units and moved them downstairs. So I don't feel like their scope of work would qualify them for the type of project that we're looking to have done in the library.
Which is significant here.
Yes, and I've been through this once before. Nothing against Preferred, because they were not the movers, but we did have a general mover, and we had thousands of items all over the floor that the library staff eventually had to place back on the shelves, and it delayed the project by over a month.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. So this was bid out, and we received the bids. I know we did receive a presentation from Library Design Associates. You feel they have the expertise to take this project on, they have the references, and they were the, not the lowest bidder, but probably the-
The second lowest.
The second lowest and the only one, I think, qualified to do some of the procure and construct new shelving and modify the existing shelving components that we would want, because we are going to be reusing some of the existing shelving, but modifying it to fit with the new layout, correct?
That is correct.
And they have, we've checked references, they have a pretty significant list of references for this type of work.
They have a very extensive list. As I provided a couple, a few more came in after the fact that packet was provided, but they do pretty much every library in Macomb County. They just did Roseville, so their project scope were pretty similar size to the Roseville library, but they've done larger. They completed the Flint Public Libraries and are working with Rochester Hills Public Library, which received a glowing recommendation for Kyle that talked to the committee from Library Designs Associates.
Okay, and the, we did have a moving cost within the budget. It wasn't this extensive, but it wasn't also for the specialized moving and the shelf modifications. Do you think for the increase, this would be beneficial to the services the library provides as well as the operation internally?
Yes, I mean, especially while we are going through renovation, they plan on making sure that those items are easily accessible and making sure that when they go back onto the shelves, that everything is appropriately put back. Like I said, having been through this before, I've had to rearrange a whole top floor of the Sterling Heights Public Library, and it was, it was a nightmare. So to have the expertise of someone that I know I don't have to watch and teach the Dewey Decimal System to would be much appreciated as well.
And I think one of the things that is important, we are closing the library for this renovation to happen, but we will still be offering curbside services, curbside services, so people will still be able to check out things via online, pick them up, things like that. So we still will be operating in a way where the books will be accessible to the residents. So it's not like we can put these books in boxes, shove them in the corner, and forget about them for six months while the renovations go down. We need to have a working collection.
Yes, we do.
And this would assist with that?
This would greatly assist with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Stephanie, the couple quotes, you got the 134,925, but then there's the separate $115 for, is that basically to reduce the height of each shelf?
If we go that route, that would be their unit cost. So they were, they were the only ones to provide a unit cost breakdown to modify shelving. So yes, if we, if the committee does decide to move forward instead of procuring new shelving for the children's section, which is what we're more leaning towards, that would be their cost for that.
Okay, so if we were to reuse shelves, we would drop the new furniture cost to compensate for the 115 per shelf?
Correct.
Would be the idea, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right. And I'm surprised you wouldn't want to teach the Dewey Decimal System anybody that would want to learn.
Well, I will say that when we do teach it to staff, it does take a long time, so I would prefer not to.
All right, thank you.
Motion be in order?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi to approve the shelving relocation vendor, Library Designs, the amount of 134,925. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero passes.
Thank you very much.
And you're still up. Stephanie Fair. Item C is request to approve the bid for the St. Clair Public Library renovation project.
Yes, so as you know, we had bids for the library renovation project, in which we received nine bids. I do have Craig Boreham here from PlayPlus, who will discuss the project itself and go over the alternates and the cost breakdown as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So yes, we did receive bids for the project, which primarily to renovate, relocate, and reorganize the youth areas of the library, consequently also affecting almost all the other spaces of the library because of the kind of shuffle game. On, let's see, on July 15th, we received nine bids for the project. I think four of those were under our projected budget. With the lowest, we asked for the bids to be delivered in a base bid, which was the kind of base scope, and then we broke out three different add alternates. One was to add acoustic baffles to an area just outside of the maker space, the kind of project room in the children's wing. And then the second alternate was to upgrade the lighting throughout the other spaces of the library, which were outside of our original scope of work. And then the third alternate was to replace the sliding accordion door in the kind of community room, project room toward the back of the library. North American Construction Enterprises were the low base bid on the project, but if you tally up all of the alternates, SOXY Construction was the low overall bid on the project. And both of those are under the estimated budget that we produced as part of the project estimate. We did subsequent referencing of both of those construction companies, as well as DNS Constructors in the third low bid, following a kind of due diligence process and just asked kind of basic questions regarding communications and time management, quality of work, surprises that may have emerged along the road, along the way in other projects, kind of pretty standard set of kind of questions and referencing. of pretty standard set of kind of questions and referencing. I believe the report that you probably have in your package, we had not yet been able to reference SOXY Construction in that, we subsequently have referenced them, and we got two very glowing recommendations from them. One from the interim director of facilities from Pontiac Public Schools and the other from the director of Temple Israel Day School in West Bloomfield. Where SOXY for both of those are doing multiple projects. Both gave very high recommendations for SOXY. So depending on council's desires or your inclinations, if you choose not to pursue the add alternates, National American, North American Construction Enterprises is the overall low bidder in that scenario. Their referencing was good. One caveat, one of the references raised some questions about communication and scheduling early in a project where they were a subcontractor, not the general contractor, but by the end, they said that basically those issues are resolved and still gave them a good marks. And then the other, if you choose to do all the alternates, we would highly recommend SOXY Construction as the company to go with.
Do you have a comment? I have a couple of questions.
No, I was just, I mean, if you have a couple of questions, I guess I could either. I was just going to go on about the committee and where we've at and then kind of make a few comments and then kick it over to actually Candace as the liaison to that board, but I'm not sure whether I want to, however you want to do it, Mayor.
So just trying, I want to understand the alternates just a little bit better. Acoustical ceilings, right? That's one, right? Why did you put it in there? What is needed because of that? Why did you think you needed this?
So this is a, this is a kind of upgrade from a typical acoustic tile ceiling, which is what you have in here. And this will help reduce the noise area and probably one of the noisest areas of the library. We took it out of the base bid because our design development estimates were a little bit over budget and this was an area that we identified as potentially we could, we could find some savings there if we didn't pursue that. So we left it as an add alternate, but it is an area that both provides a kind of aesthetic upgrade, let's say, to the existing ceiling, but also will, I think, improve the acoustics as in dampening the sound.
In that one area or in the entire library?
Just in that one area. We are doing this treatment in other areas, particularly around the teen area, but this is probably more towards the younger kids as well as the project kind of maker space room. That's currently the friends space in the library.
Explain the alternate three, which is what, like, you know, the
The sliding door.
Door replacement, we'll call it.
The room, if it faces Jefferson.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a large room that's used for kind of special events and kind of meetings. There's a kind of sliding operable door. It's not in the best shape. It's serviceable, but the thought was that while we're doing all of these other upgrades, let's make that a much more serviceable.
Is that thing been there like fifty years, my entire life, right? That
Yep.
Right?
It has been.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I thought.
It was there when my mom worked there.
Yeah, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure, I thought so.
An increase.
Okay, I understand, I understand. Been there a long time. And then let's go over the lights, right? That's, at this point, it looks like the most expensive one, according to Sachi or whatever it is. Didn't we put new, didn't we put new lights in here recently?
It hasn't been very recently, but I think too long ago, but these were kind of a retrofit of the existing fixtures, so they're not performing at the optimum level that new fixtures would perform at. They also, if you compare them to a new fixture, you're going to get a slightly different color temperature. Actually, the quality of the light is going to be different. And because the openness of the library, you know, even though you're standing in an area that we're fully renovating, you're still going to be able to see into the other areas where we're not doing as extensive renovation, we're just relocating furniture. The decision was made both because we would save money doing this later by folding it into the general conditions of the current contractor. Doing it again, you have another contractor, they come out, they start up, all of the general conditions are applied again to the project a second time at a later date. So doing it this way, we get a reduction in the kind of overall cost of doing that work because you're folding it in with someone who's already doing it in other areas of the project. Plus, you're also gaining some energy efficiency, I think, from those upgraded fixtures from what you have now.
It's not that significant, though, energy?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay.
But some
But, okay. Ms. Rusi?
Oh, I
Oh, does, do you have something? I was, I mean, it's fine, I was just going to kick it off.
There you go.
And then kick it off to you, but that's fine.
Yep, Ron, and who is not present today, and I serve on the library committee, we've wanted to present these different things that as options, alternates are not necessary per se to the project itself and desire to present something to this body as close to the anticipated budget and the budget that was granted to us as possible, along with the other donations and funds we have that lay out this budget. That's why we separated them. We wanted to give options to this body about how much you wanted to spend on this project. I think it's a good project, obviously. It's a building now that gets utilized by a lot of different segments of our community. Residents are there six days a week most of the year, so that's why we separated them. We wanted to stick within the budget, but we also wanted to provide some options, maybe for some things that extend beyond the scope of the project. We only had the youth room, the line, the line, for example, extends beyond the youth room into the rest of the library, but while the library is closed, et cetera, et cetera, that's why we wanted to present that to this body, too. So it's beyond the scope a little bit of the project, but while we were doing the youth room projects, we thought that would be a good idea to present these type of options, get pricing on them in case we wanted to take advantage of having the library closed and having work already be done to get that done, too. So like they said, alternate one is the acoustic ceilings, the baffles, that kind of, I think it would be cool, is it necessary? Not necessarily. Alternate two is the lights for the rest of the library, as we discussed at a previous meeting. Some people on council were interested in going forward with that type of option, so we thought, well, let's get some pricing and see, you know, the numbers about what we'd be talking about. And alternate three, like they said, is a sliding door that currently is, separates youth room from the conference room that's used for youth and non-youth purposes. It's really old, as was discussed, it's not in the best shape. It also really doesn't absorb sound that great, which is, has been an issue when you have youth stuff going on in the youth room and adult stuff going in the conference room. But given we are moving the youth room, hopefully that won't be as much of an issue, obviously, but that's why we present it as alternates, so this body can decide how much you want to deviate from the budget because the base bid came in pretty good with the budget we had set. And it's the alternate set now we have to discuss about where the temperature is at, taking into account the things' names, i.e. the buildings are going to be closed, and this is going beyond the scope of the youth projects specifically, but it might be some nice things to do if this body wants to fund it. I, from the command, can't speak for Ron, but I'm just glad to get the base bid done and anything else would be a nice bonus at this point.
Mr. Lent, you provided this budget here. Where is the, we'll call it the brick program and the fundraising that was in there? I didn't see it in here. I can't exactly remember the cost, but I thought I had an idea of what they thought they could raise, but I won't say because maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see any of that in here. Where is that?
So the brick paving program is specifically tied to the outside and we've been advising the bricks. That is not part of this project. This project only deals with the inside of the building.
That's just going to take care of ripping all that cement up and getting all that stuff.
The columns and refreshing the outside. So it's a separate project outside.
And we're working on other community donations, too, but we don't have those now to comfortably budget, so we haven't budgeted those yet. There still may be additional donations or sponsorships coming in. We're always seeking fundraising, so.
Okay. And I'll just piggyback off of Councilwoman Rusi's comments. This library board met diligently, myself, Chris Reyes, Stephanie, some of the librarians, we kept them involved as well, especially in terms of the design phases. And as we mentioned, this is specifically really for the kids area, which is where you would enter in, but by moving the kids area there, there is some revitalization of the entire library. As we kind of mentioned during our work study, this does include recarpeting the entire library because when you start moving shelves, it's indentations, some of there's no carpet underneath where those shelving units were. Moving the friend shop because we have to move where the friends is, that'll be in where the old children's area used to be. And these alternates were specifically just to try to make sure that we stayed on target with the budget and with where we are. Looking back and kind of going over what's here, I did kind of lay out a tentative budget now that we do have the base bid in, the current bid with the alternates, where we are with the funding. As everybody here is aware, we did receive 1.5 million in HUD. We do have the Joyce Robinson donation of 181,844. We also have another donation from Teresa Zeski, sorry if I pronounce that incorrectly, the library endowment fund donation did give 135,000. The Friends of the St. Clair Shores Library also donated 10,000. And then we have an estimated library fund balance of approximately 325. That 325 does include, as council knows when we pass our budget, approximately 75,000 and just less expenses that we budgeted in the budget. So that does include that. I do see here, you can also see underneath our soft costs, we have our engineering costs, we do have the furniture. As Stephanie had mentioned during the relocation of the furniture, this is something that when we, we are bidding that out ourselves, like we did for the pier and we did for these other projects. So that bid, when it comes in of what the furniture is, we're coming back in front of council. And then we have, as we had mentioned earlier, the 135,000 of relocation. And we also still have in here an owner's contingency of about 175,000. So stating that, the regular base bid, including with the contingency built in, is approximately 57,580 short. And then if we were to do all the alternates, we would be looking to do a budget amendment from the general fund, fund balance, which we talked about earlier, of about 415,080. Now, mind you, there are still a few things in here, as Councilwoman Rusi mentioned, there are some donations that are still trying to be secured through some of the public service groups and some entities. And then there's also the allocation of the furniture bid, which hasn't came in, and then the use of the contingency. The one thing I would state, that I would say just from the board that we've met, I think the alternate number two with the LED lighting is probably the most important of, I would say, I'm trying to speak for the committee, I know Ron isn't here and Candace could, feel free to kind of chime in if you would like, but I think that was probably the most important one due to the, you know, as the engineer from Play had mentioned, having different hums and having different kind of lighting in your library, it is an open concept, it's isolated, but you're going to be able to see the difference. And that's the very first thing that you see when you walk in. I think that would be the most important. And I guess the second, if we were to rank them, the second most important would be probably condensing the noise library is. We are going to have people that are going to be studying, working in groups, working in meetings, and we also do not want to discourage children from having and enjoying the children's area. We're creating this for the children. We want to be able to make this a lively area for the children. So being able to damper that sound, sorry, being able to damper that sound, I think, is critical. And then finally, I think alternate three with the accordion door, it is very old, it does squeak, but I believe trying to build that into the budget in future years and it being kind of offset to its own little corner, as well as, I would say, looking at the bids that came in, especially, you know, if we go with the base bid, it's North American, but if we go with Sachi Construction, because of the lowest bid on the other two alternates as a combined package, Sachi ended up being the third highest on the accordion door. There are especially door companies, I would probably recommend bidding that out separately if we were to do it, and there probably would be a little bit of a cost savings. And I think we could build that in the budget in the future. So if this council was inclined, I would say alternate one and two are the most important, with two being the most important of the two.
Mr. Kieran.
Thank you. So just kind of running percentages over here. So if we don't include the 325,000 from the fund balance from the library, because we use fund balance from library, use fund balance from general fund, combination of both, whatever. Basically, we got 72% of the money donated for this, include with all alternates.
Is that without the 325?
That's without the 325. With the 325, it's 84%. So based on the rules that we had for place and fire, people are giving us 84% of the money, why can't we come up with the other 16%? I'm willing to find it. I think it's great to just get all this done and let's get the project moving.
I think very well we could find it when we get done with the audit. I think that we very well could see some money in
They could be there. And also recognizing we've moved several other major capital items out of general fund, right? We're funding a capital project every year out of CDVG now. All parking lots don't come out of there, alleys don't come out of there. You know, we can find, even the other two alternates, what, one is 27,000, the other one's 99,000?
Yeah, 93 and 28, yep.
Right?
Yep.
The money's there. I say, let's do the whole thing.
Is that a motion?
Just a motion.
Hold on, I'm still
I am willing to make that motion, the mayor's ready for a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I usually say that, thank you. Am I right? You can't take my job to shed here, I want to still be here. Mr. Kieran, is that in the form of a motion?
I will make the motion to approve the project to Sachi with the alter your alternates.
I will support that.
Mr. Vitale.
I know this won't matter in the end because they're going to get it, but I'm going to say, did you include alternate number three, just so we had one to throw out? Because you're totally changing the use of that area, so how is that accordion door even going to be used going forward? It's not going to be the children's area anymore.
Stephanie.
So the plan is still to use that for programming and what now has not, will not be the children's area, it will be the bookstore, it will be sort of like a area to hang out, and it could be a little bit of our more louder adult area. So we do want that sound barrier for that accordion so that we can have the presentations that do attract the adults that come to the library.
I guess I'm wondering, though, is an accordion door even the appropriate? They're 9,000 more than the next bid. I think Mr. Lent made a good point that we could probably get this done cheaper separately by not including it as part of this. And it may turn out that an accordion door isn't even the best use of the space, maybe building a temporary wall, or excuse, not temporary wall, building an actual sound deadened wall, which you could probably get done for that amount of money, might make more sense. And really, the only criticism I've heard of the door is it's old and it's creaky. Well, new doors can be creaky, too. I mean, it's an accordion door, it makes noise.
I'm Adam's family.
I mean, I think there are different sliders, although I would have to say I'm not a design expert nor accordion door expert, I can only talk about the one at the library, where maybe Play Plus would have more information on what they felt like would be a better alternative if we didn't go to the accordion door, but.
I mean, honestly, I thought that was just in there so we'd have one to throw out.
No.
It seemed to make no sense. It's 9,000 more than where we could get it elsewhere. Our programming's changing in that area. You just said it may become a bookstore or, I mean, it might just make sense to make that a permanent wall, so.
What, I mean, I can't speak for Mr. Kieran and Ms. Rusi, but I, maybe if we have the money allocated and we let Mr. Lent look and evaluate that and see where it is, I think we can write that, if it's, we've got this money in here and that's the motion, maybe you guys can look at it and maybe go, you know what, there's
We can always not spend it, right?
Right.
Change orders, yeah. Change it or whatever, but let's have them at least evaluate that. We know we've at least put the most money aside and you're coming with change orders or whatever, we hope it'll be last, right, we'll do this or that, so I think that would work.
Maybe we could even get a bid out.
It could be, right?
Get a bid out.
Great, and look at it.
For 9,000 less for one of these other ones.
Mr. Rubello.
I knew Mr. Kieran would come around to that, that way of thinking at some point. The 84%
The lower dollar amount, I can't.
Can I ask you one question about the history department?
Sure.
Where are you going to put that?
So that is the Joyce T. Robinson donation that we received, so it's going to be upstairs.
It's going to be upstairs?
It's going to be much more accessible. We have a lot of plans for that area to have it, you know, previously it was only open certain times and days, so there's a lot of internal talk to make that more available to the residents.
I figure with my library fines, I had to pay for something in there myself, so.
Thanks for all your hard work and your committee stuff.
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Kieran, supported by Ms. Rusi to award to Sachi Construction Development in the amount of 1,836,500. But caveat is to evaluate the alternate, which is three, and figure that out, and if you need to come back and say, we're not going to have Sachi, we're going to have ABC, we're going to take care of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
When do we start?
Well, September 2nd is when we're going to close the building to the public. Library Design said that they could start in September for a shelf relocation. We have some internal things that we need to do. Obviously, we're going to have a temporary circulation station moved into the programming room and then kind of move from there. So beyond the shelving relocation, then when Sachi would be able to start, would be something that we'll probably be working out and discussing with them in the committee.
And then I will work with Mr. Lent regarding the money, trying to work on that and see where it is. We also may have to wait a little bit to see when we start getting final audit, right? We're still early in the whole audit process and figure out how we are there. So this could, Mr. Lent, take us a good 60 days to figure this whole, this whole thing out. And then we'll bring it back to council as more or less informational, right? Because we've already voted to do it, just how we're going to do it. Okay, is that good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is request to approve the purchase of two Ford Explorers. Sergeant Campbell?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to request the purchase of two Ford Explorer PIs from Gornow Ford. State bid pricing, each vehicle's costing $49,871. This year, we are budgeted for the purchase of four vehicles, so those will be two out of the four vehicles. And Ford's saying delivery is looking about November of this year. Looking back over the last five years, pricing for everything's obviously been going up. But for the Explorers, it's looking like they're about $12,000 more than they were five years ago. So with that in mind, Fleet Manager Donna Manzo and I are working with our amazing mechanics down at Motor Pool to determine what is the most logical and financially smart options as to which vehicles these two Explorers would be replacing. Usually, I'm pretty good with saying these are what we're going to be doing, this is our plan. But if you were to look at the chart that I included in your packet, I think it's pretty clear that there's quite a few options we have with these two vehicles. So that's why we're working with Motor Pool more so than usual this round with these two vehicles.
Ms. Rusi?
Sergeant Campbell, thank you for your care and attention to this. I always appreciate seeing the metrics on the different vehicles, knowing where we're at with that. Always appreciate too the additional justification and getting ahead of this, given that we won't be getting them until November. And that will give you some time to work on the plan for how to utilize these, which it does look like we are in very great need of them, so I would move to approve.
Support. Moved by Ms. Rusi, second by Mr. Rubello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For you? Seventy, request to approve, request to approve, approval to award the pavement marking program. Mr. Fuckleton, city engineer.
Good evening, mayor and council. So we put our next, you know, three-year program out for our pavement markings. The pavement markings program, we cycle through all of the markings on our major streets and then we try to address as many as we can on the local streets, such as, you know, special markings like crosswalks around schools and things of that nature. So PK Contracting was the lone bid for this. That's pretty standard. They're really the only ones who do road striping like that. And as usual, came in with reasonable prices. So I'm looking to award this project to PK Contracting.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. And Mike, is there a different requirement now for the width of the lane markings?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Something with, like, the county just went through and redid their roads.
Okay.
And it looks like their stripes may be wider than what they were.
Okay.
And that, so I don't know whether it's automotive's lane detection now using those. I don't know if it's a standard change or something. Could just follow up on that, because that's what I heard from the county.
Okay, yeah, I can check into M dot standards and see if they had an errata or something, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
There's something about these road markings too with me, I don't know what it is. So the striping of them. So when John was talking about wider, are those the ones that you would see like in, I always equate them to the Abbey Road with the Beatles walking across with the thicker lines. Is that what you're talking about, John?
No, the regular lanes on a road.
Double yellow.
Double yellow, white dash.
Just the double yellow. I'm talking about the crosswalks that are going across the street. Sort of like what we did down at Nine Mile and Mac.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think those ones would be any different than they normally are. But there are various ways you can do those ones. You can do the two, you can do the two six footers that are, you know, the width of the path of travel. You can do the bigger, the bigger rectangular markings that go across, that go all the way across in the same direction as traffic. I mean, there's various things that you can do for.
Are there differences and big differences in the prices of these? Of how you do those?
All of those special markings are generally between like $100 to $200 each. So there's really not a huge difference in price for those, no. I mean, the regular stripings, obviously, a lot cheaper. But if you're looking at those special emphasis markings like that, they're all pretty much the same price.
I don't know if there's any, anyone up here else that wants to go that route, but I'm open to it. So.
And the importance of. Could you elaborate on what you mean?
I'll send them to you. I'll do that, that'd be good.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
That's fair enough. I don't know if this is something that has to be done right now or whatever.
We can work on it. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you, I have just a question on the purchase order. Compared to the memo, the budget impact says that the, it's coming from account 202, blah, blah, blah. The PO has it coming out of two different accounts, 202 and 203.
So, yeah, so that would be, that's the budget split between our, between major and local.
Okay, so it's not coming all out of 202, it's coming out 202 and 203?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, and for 202, it says 140 in the PO and 203 is 60, that's correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so even though it's broken down under, even though it's broken down in the memo by seasonal, it's being broken down in here by major versus local?
Local, yes.
So. Do you see the memo versus the PO?
Yes, yes, I do, because I realize, yeah, I'm thinking and I'm like, I did the PO after I did the amount for counts.
Okay, because, yeah, it's seasonal on the memo, but it's account-wise by the PO.
Yeah.
So the PO is correct.
The PO is correct in those two accounts, but it's, it's still, those amounts in the council packet were still correct by like fiscal year.
Okay, so it's still being done.
It's just further broken down in the PO. So it'd be like $200,000 for the fiscal year, but then it's 140 and 60.
Yeah, I think, so fall '25 and spring '26 is the same fiscal year. So if you were to add up the 143, 500 plus the 55, 715, you get right around the 200. Do we know the exact amount, how much is going to be local and majors? But it's the same 200, 200 is approximately what we're going to spend.
Right, that's why I saw it's about 200. And I was wondering though, because one is like, are we going to only do major one part of the season and local the other part of the, I'm just, just how it looks, it's confusing how it's laid out and divided very similarly, but I guess different.
It happens to be similar, but yes, different.
Okay.
So it's not like we do local in the fall.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
We do them pretty much all at the same time, in the spring and fall, and then also in the spring.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, if anything, it would probably just be broken out between like areas of the city.
That's what I figured, but I just, again, the numbers were so close, I wanted to. The division was a little confusing, so, okay.
I apologize for that.
Oh, it's okay, thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
I wouldn't want to try to say what's going through Dave's mind, but I think I know what he's talking about.
That's scary for you.
He's talking about zebra stripe crossings probably over at Blossom Heath, where we do the farmer's market and everything like that.
Yes.
But then that brought to mind, we're probably not going to be marking any pavement there because it's all torn up. And I would think the county is going to deliver it to us striped, at least the first time around, after they're done with it. And this contract's three years.
Are you talking down on Nine Mile?
Yeah, between the whole Nautical Mile area that's being torn up, so.
Well, that, yeah, that area, that area we might not do.
I know that's where you want them.
Well, we'll be doing it.
We're doing it after the road is?
Well, the split will not be the county, the split will be about, in round numbers, 65% SCMSD and 35% the City of St. Clair Shores. If you're referring to paving from Nine Mile to Bond here, that's the split. So the city will be very much involved in assisting.
Okay, so there's.
So we would touch, we would touch up then like any markings that would be needed after the construction on that, just, you know, for safety. But then, you know, obviously, once we have the big reconstruction project there.
We probably won't even have to sandblast off the old ones now because they'll be gone.
Okay, motion would be in order? Moved to approve. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by.
Support.
Ms. Burgess? To award to PK Contracting a total amount of $644,905.55. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Item F, request to approve the Blossom Heath Storm Shore Pump Station and Boat Ramp. Mr. Babcock, DPW Director?
Good evening again. This project is to repair a stormwater pump station that picks up rainwater that collects from a portion of Revere Street, Blossom Heath Boulevard, Blossom Heath Parking Lot. And it outlets to the canal right next to the lighthouse that's back there. While this work is being done, we also are proposing to do some modifications to the boat ramp there at Blossom Heath. And Eagle's permit allowed us to coffer dam off the end of the canal there. So it's, it's a perfect time to do both projects at the same time. This was put out to bid. Fishbeck was our engineering company and they checked the references and recommend we go with the lowest bidder, which was the Vesta Companies. This will also require a budget amendment. So the recommended motion is to award the project to Vesta and approve the budget amendments.
And then this starts 10-1?
Yes.
Questions? Moved to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by, sorry, Ms. Rusi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, six to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
And then item nine is request to approve the Veterans Memorial Park Pathway and Parking Lot Project. Mr. Lent, this is one we discussed at a study session.
This is correct, this is the one we discussed at a study session. Director Spinazola is, got delayed on his return back from his vacation, so I will cover this today. As we discussed in our work-study session, this is the drive into Veterans Park, but it also is kind of, serves as a dual purpose. It is actually the walking path that kind of connects through that dry path. So as anybody's well aware of, when you pull into Veterans right there, it is just a gravel kind of torn up area, quite a bit of like little ruts that are in there. And then soon as you get around, you get onto the paved pathway and you have a beautiful paved pathway all the way around. That drive access is utilized by all of our contractors that are coming in to service Memorial Park. It is also where our recreation department comes in, pulls in, where our lifeguard comes in to administer any chemicals and water in the splash pad that is there. So what we are looking to do is pave that as well as put a designated kind of striping in line that'll designate where the walking path will be. But it will give you a drive and it'll also include three to four additional little parking spaces. So we don't also have people pulling into the grass like they currently do and kind of rut it up over there. But then also, one of the other assets would be giving them an area where they can actually back up and then pull in. The last thing we want is individuals that are trying to back out of that area while we also have walkers. So this kind of serves as a dual purpose. One of the things that is in here though, you can see an alternate. This alternate is for a curb. This curb would not be able to come out of the streets budget. What we were looking to do with this curb is, everybody knows that splash pad there, that water is overflowing that area, it's leading into that grass area, which then is amplifying, one, a water loss because we're recircling that water. This would be able to kind of maintain the water in there, would save us some water costs. But it also helps prohibit that water from leaking into the new parking lot area and creating potential issues. So the curb would actually come out of the Parkson Recreation Budget. So when we do, if at the end of the season we need a budget amendment, we would do a budget amendment for that. But we would have to make sure that is allocated to the Parkson Recreation Department for that alternate. But the bid price of $169,993.18 would be awarded and it would come out of our local street mileage for the parking lot.
And I was, I can't commit, but I was willing to try to talk to the Activities Committee if maybe we could get some split here for that $12,000 that might be assist. I know the committee's always, we're also concerned about the pavilion. We got some other concrete, we actually, there's some cracked, we'll call it the dance floor. So I know we're trying to look at that, but they have talked about helping out over there. So willing to do that and go back, so maybe we can get some assistance at least on that $12,075. And I think we could, we do have a meeting coming up here shortly, we might be able to get an answer back to the body soon. Mr. Rubello?
I think we're all pretty much aware of that area back there. And, yeah, the cars are parking all over the place, it just doesn't look good either. So that'll clean up that park as we, as we make the park look nicer too. I will move to approve the PO and award Luigi Ferdinandi and Sons in the bid amount of, how much is it, budget, right, $169,993? It says budget impact.
Out of the street budget and then there'll be an additional for the alternate. Yes, but the whole amount to part is going to be $182,068. We're just trying to figure out how we take care of that $12,000, but they're going to get paid.
Okay, so it's the bid right here, the $182.
Yeah, that's what they're going to get paid, we just have to figure out how we're going to pick up the other $12,000.
Okay.
You made that motion, who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Karen?
Okay, just for clarification, okay, so the curb part you're talking about with the, if you get the money from the Activities Committee?
Right now, he's got it allocated in trying to get Parks and Rec.
Okay.
And I was offering to try to take it back to Activities and see if I can't get some assistance in that area to help Activities. They indicate many times they're short, they don't, they don't have enough money as it is, so that's why I was trying to offer that.
It's good to clean up, it's a nasty area back there.
And the curb and the Parks and Rec, they want it, they know it's an issue of that, yes. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you, so this is coming out of the streets, this qualifies because it's a service drive in a parking lot, correct? And that meets the terms of the Streets' mileage?
That is correct.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Karen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Six to zero, thank you. Item eight, consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Burgess, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Updates and follow-ups from prior meetings? Mr. Lent?
Mr. Karen asked for a detailed recovery plan from Priority Waste. Priority Waste has not yet provided a detailed plan. They've only stated that the new trucks will be deployed in St. Clair Shores in the future without specific timelines offered. The council asked.
Go ahead. Thank you. So on that, so they promised a document within two weeks, it's been four to five weeks. So what was our last communication with them?
I have had numerous communications, stayed in the same thing and to no avail of a report yet.
Are you communicating with Vince who made the promise or with the managers?
I have, my communications recently has been back to Dan Benet. But I will say that we did receive a voicemail that actually went to, I believe, the mayor, correct?
Yes.
That kind of gave indication that we will be, we'll be seeing new trucks in St. Clair Shores.
End of the month.
End of the month.
Not gently used trucks.
He says.
He said three, he said, Mr. Karen.
Gently used?
I can only give.
Sorry, I got to ask for clarification based on what he said.
No question, he told me three to five new trucks.
Okay.
We won't believe it till we see it.
Exactly, okay.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you, I, Councilmember Bella and I had also asked them about the possibility of a dedicated phone line for customer service issues. of a dedicated phone line for customer service issues for St. Clair Shores, they also said that'd be part of their, get back to us in a week or two, have they gotten back to us on that specific thing, because that's aside from a new trucks, old trucks, gently used trucks, blue trucks, red trucks, that's, that's a totally different thing, because I'm still hearing from residents who are on hold, I don't know why anyone would be waiting on hold for three hours, but they're still waiting on hold for a very long time, even just to get through to a human being to talk to you that, hey, you missed my yard waste, et cetera, et cetera.
So at, at this time, there has not been a new dedicated line, I know that with the last conversation, that is still being looked at, also, they do, are releasing a new updated portal, so we have actually been given an email, I think it was Thursday or Friday, Jimmy and Mr. Babcock, to set up a new training to unveil this, to show us, I believe it's going to have more access, one of the things that we had asked for prior to them showing up at the meeting was for us to be able to track the GPS, so we can actually have indicators that we can actually put on and we can have eyes on it ourselves and be able to give access to myself, Mr. Babcock's D P W office, and then be able to share that at, at times.
Isn't it absolutely pathetic, we have to use more of our administrative time to babysit their trucks when they refuse to, like Councilman Vitale had suggested, like we had, you know, with previous contractors, a guy in a pickup truck just, you know, using his human eyes to look and see and keep up on trucks that way, but instead we're invest, they're investing in new technology that we have to them babysit to make sure they do the job, we paid, what, two point seventy-five million dollars a year for, that's ridiculous.
Our people are cheaper.
And I know, also, some of the other conversations that I was digging in on, actually, Councilwoman Rusi, you had brought up and kind of made sure that stated with their sponsorships and all that kind of stuff, that, you know, ultimately, why are they marketing themselves when they're having issues with infrastructure and trucks and not getting them here? I will tell you the answer that I received at that time, the agreement with the Red Wings and the Tigers that just actually got broadcasted was an agreement that was put in place way, way before they even purchased the other communities, it's just now coming to fruition, they actually paused that sponsorship in order because of the purchase and the money. I said, that is fine, but I want a report stating that, I want an information packet that comes to our council along with all the other requests that states, hey, this is it, because at least that's an answer, that's a little bit better than us now seeing something that gets reported on the news and something that just now comes to us, and then, I think it was pretty much two days after we kind of gave them a hard time on the sponsorships, that, that's something you probably want to get in front of, however, I still have not received that documentation.
Right, and, and, you know, not to, you know, rehash this whole thing again, because we've talked about it a lot, but it's just, it's frustrating when you summon them to the meeting, and not the legal version of the word summons, I guess I'll asterisk that, but you request the appearance of, and they comply, and they show up to answer questions, and we have the VP of whatever, and we have the general counsel who's also, what do you call himself, a co-founder or whatever, standing up there making us promises, and they're not promises, you know, that, oh, it will be a hundred percent great, they're not staying, that would have been fantastic, but they're very doable processes, like a plan and an answer, and they can't even meet the terms that they agreed to from a podium, it wasn't just, you know, they sent just somebody who didn't have the ability to make those representations to us, they sent pretty high up people in the company who work with, you know, you and administration on a near day-to-day or day-to-day basis, and they made these promises and they can't keep them, they can't keep a simple, hey, we'll get back to you within the specified period of time, and they're here, and that's one. The council asked for Priority Waste's return to, I don't get a little have you, August eighteenth for an update, well, it's August eighteenth, I didn't see anybody from Priority at the podium, they couldn't keep that promise either.
Nope.
So quite honestly, I could hear all the promises about new trucks in the world, but I won't, no, the, the guys on their trucks, they're not the issue, it's the people who they send to the podium, it's the administration who made these promises, it's not, it, it's unfortunate because it's a contractor we're paying a lot of money for, service for residents, depend upon, and we as council look pretty ineffective when we can't even, you know, get, and get a promise to have an answer within a timely manner that they agreed to, and that's, that's a shame.
Yep, and, and while we're talking to, I did appoint, like the committee, as, as I said last meeting, I think that the contract ends six thirty twenty-six next year, so it's, so less than, it's ten and a half months till it ends, and Ms. Rusi and Mr. Vital and Mr. Frederick are going to be on the committee and evaluating, in the, in the past, we, we've just evaluated bidding it all out, which there was, there was competition here, we've got to evaluate if we're going to bid it out, or we're going to evaluate, do we take it all inside and, and, and do it, do it here with us possibility, or is there's a consortium, maybe we, we work with other, other communities, so the administration and hopefully, and I thank the committee for trying to doing this, because it's a big task to evaluate all this and, and see what maybe the options that we have for the city of St. Clair Shores, because it, the current, the current ones right now being bid out, the, the bids are, there, there almost isn't an option, they're, they're, they're stuck with priority, we've seen that already in a couple of communities, so we're trying to get ahead of it by evaluating it and see if there are other options, so I appreciate them for looking into it, but I thought I would bring that up.
Yep, and we have already met too.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Karen noted that the progress payments for the central fire station and police department projects, partners in Artest, list incorrect account numbers, the fire department account begins with two eight-five rather than four fifteen, which is a designated construction account, he requests an explanation and review of the discrepancy, fund two eighty-five is the ARPA fund and fund four fifteen is the capital projects fund for the central fire station and police, sorry, fire station and police department projects. Since ARPA money has been designated to be used to pay for these projects, the invoices were coded to the ARPA fund, fund two eight-five, a reclassification entry was made to move these payments to the ARPA fund, fund two eight-five, to the capital projects fund four fifteen as directed, all future invoices related to these projects will be coded to the capital projects fund four fifteen. Mr. Karen requested to delay accepting the June financial reports until updated versions are provided that include the bulk of the end-year expenses, the June financial reports will be updated and included in the consent agenda once the bulk of the year-end expenses are all recorded, revenue expenditures related to June continue to be received and recorded because Ju- June also impacts July, both of these will appear on the agenda in September. Mr. Vitale noted that the service entrance from Norcrest has overgrown weeds and plants, he asked whether the fence should be screened and requested a code enforcement inspection. Weeds and overgrowth have been removed from the fence line and the groundskeeper is working on a solution to, for the equipment storage, code enforcement has given them until the end of August to comply. Mr. Vitale reported the trees near Harper and Maple are touching the roofs of nearby businesses and need trimming, the forestry department will trim back the trees from the buildings at Maple and Harper. I'm sorry. Mr. Rabello raised concern about a telephone pole at Nine Mile in front of the Mercedes-Benz that appears to be leaning and possibly at risk of falling, CDI has forwarded a photo of the leaning pole to D T E Community Lighting and asked for a response. Mr. Karen requested an ordinance review regarding the proposed no right turn signal at Harper and St. Gertrude, he believes the ordinance and as this is approved earlier today. Mr. Rabello asked for a copy of the color tax bills that are being mailed out, attached is a copy of the summer tax bill with the owner's information redacted, historically summer tax bills have a blue background and the winter tax bills have a green background. Alexander, and we had two residential comments, Alexander Husef at three zero zero two zero Jefferson Avenue spoke on garbage and water in front of his house, needs a place to dispose of tires found in the lake, council offered information about long Monday and household hazardous waste and electronic collection day, the resident was also advised of these special days and conversations with the resident. Jennifer Teed at three one nine Country Club Drive spoke on balls from the golf course hitting cars and breaking windows at condos located near the second hole of the golf course, recreation director discussed options for additional signage around the condo complex directly after the meeting, that is it.
Thurston?
Yes.
I do appreciate you giving out the updates on the residents that are at the podium, but you probably shouldn't give their addresses.
Oh, sorry.
Just residents.
And, and then, this is not an update, but I know that Mr. Harms has been sending some emails regarding the pool and trying to see if we can't keep that pool open, some, maybe if we have some hot weekends, and I think he's going to try to.
Oh.
Take care of that, and go as need be.
Great.
You know.
September's a new June.
You know, under, he, he, his discretion, but I mean, he'll make the good decisions here and try to help that, that out, so I just thought I would alert that, did you have a comment on that?
I do have a quick comment on that, so we will try to keep the pool open, one of the hard parts, I will say, on the weekends, if we are able to be successful keeping the pool open, one of the problems we have with colleges starting and schools starting, staffing is a critical issue, we are to open it, but if we have limited staff, we have to have limited attendance, so there might not be days where we are, you know, yes, taking everybody, we might say, hey, you have to wait until somebody leaves, that could be the case, but we are going to do everything to stay open.
We're trying to work, work through it, and, and I think we all know Mr. Harms does a good job of trying to, trying to meet that, so we, I just thought I would keep everyone right, okay, with that, we'll go to individual council members, and that will be Mr. Vitale.
Oh, wow, that was quick.
I, I do it in order.
No, no, I understand, I could have, actually, I didn't have much for tonight.
Alrighty, thank you.
Move the meeting along.
Ms. Burgess.
Okay, I just have a couple of things, I wanted to bring up our Cool Cities Committee is hosting the October Fest, we've been doing that since two thousand and fifteen, it was an annual, one-night-only Oktoberfest-themed event, and for this tenth anniversary, the committee is revising the format of the event to support bars and restaurants throughout the city by running a Shoretober Feast, it's going to be from Saturday, September twentieth, through Sunday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, to coincide with the dates of the true German Oktoberfest, we're asking us established establishments participating in the Shoretober Feast to donate gift cards in any denomination which will be included in a random drawing giveaway to customers participating in the Shoretober Feast, there'll be signs posted at the different restaurants throughout the establishment that will provide a Q R code for patrons to submit their proof of support during the Shoretober Feast, we encourage, but it's not required, the establishment to consider adding Oktoberfest themes, beer, decor, and menu items for the duration of the campaign, the St. Clair Shores Cool City Committee will feature participating Shoretober Feasts established on our website and our social media, our goal is that the campaign will increase foot traffic to the St. Clair Shores dining scene and provide an opportunity for a community to discover all the amazing places to eat and drink in the city, the committee plans to use the campaign to launch a bigger Oktoberfest-themed celebration in two thousand and twenty-six with the return of both Oktoberfeast and Oktoberfest, it's going to be a really great time, a lot of our, we, I think we had like thirty-some, don't quote me, of restaurants and bars that we've already started this week of reaching out to, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback, so people will go around, go into the different places, they'll scan the code, they'll submit their things to us, and then we will do random drawings, like, for instance, like first prize winner will get three hundred in, in gift cards for around the city, a second-place winner will get like two hundred and fifty, and third-place winner a hundred, something like that, so it'll be a really cool event, and it just will help to spread the word to, you know, our establishments here in the city, we have lots of great places to dine and eat, so, also just wanted to make mention that this Wednesday at seven P M, at our Music on the Lake, Kathleen Murray and the Groove Council is going to be there this, that evening, and then our last one is actually going to be Friday, the twenty-ninth of October will be Captain Fantastic, and those are the two makeup from the rain dates, so we definitely have Music on the Lake this Wednesday and also this next Friday, and also, registration is now live for our Saint Isaac Jokes, our Fall Festival's coming up on September twentieth, and the cornhole tournament is now live to set up, if you're interested in being in the tournament, there's going to be lots of different ways you can be participating in the tournament, and that's on Saturday, September twentieth, from three to seven P M, and it's got, we got Big Shots Cornhole coming in, that's going to be taking that on for us, and we already have a sponsorship for that, so it's going to be an amazing day, and as we had, the Harper Cruise is coming up on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, and just want to let you know that we did secure at one location, the Orbitsons will be playing, so, and that will be at the corner of Sunnydale and Harper's, so come out and see them during that time as you are having fun at the Harper Cruise. And I just wanted, again, to say my condolences to Ron and his family and the passing of his mom.
Thank you, Mr. Rabello.
Thank you, Mayor, what's on that corner, B A S security system, so they'll be having fun down there.
Yep, Orbitsons.
So just to add on to the Saint Isaac Jokes, Mainstream Drive will be the band playing there, and again, Linda said September twentieth, and that event goes on from one to ten o'clock, and to add on a little bit more, she's talking food, try the Nautical Mile this week, go on down there and help them out, we got trolleys running on Thursdays, and it's a lot of fun, they've been getting a lot of people on those trolleys, dropping you off at different locations on the Nautical Mile, you can get on, you can get off, eat there, drink there, get back on the trolley, and it just makes continuous loops, so it's a lot of fun, it's going over pretty darn good.
Sponsored by Tiffa, thank Tiffa.
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Tiffa is sponsoring this trolley, and it, it's, it's working out fantastic, better than I thought it was, it sort of made it come back.
Thank you.
Thank God, I want to thank the folks over at Assumption Cultural Center, they put on one heck of a party over the weekend, and that Greek Fest, it, that was, it was like going to the state fair or something, it was incredible, so a lot of fun there.
Good food.
And a question, I think I, I already know the answer, but for those of you who's had their grass affected or their sprinkler systems affected by the sidewalk program, Dustin, I just want to make sure, if we caused the damage, one of our contractors, we're going to go back and fix the grass.
Yes, restoration occurs at the end, yep.
Okay, so, and then one other event there, you know what, have fun, everybody, be safe, I'll cut it off there, okay, we'll come back to the pictures next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Rusi.
Thank you, first off, again, Harper Cruise, August twenty-seventh, always a great time, thank you to the Shorewood Quanis, it takes a lot of volunteers to make that happen, and like they said at the podium, it's the only a hundred percent charity cruise in the state, so it's a really big, big night in the city, it's a lot of fun, and it's also doing a lot of good for the children of our community, so come out and support that, like Councilmember Bella said, congratulations to Assumption Greek, amazing Greek Fest again this weekend, Dave and I were out there five hours on Sunday serving food in the tent, great people.
With hairnets.
With hairnets, I had a hairnet on and gloves, and it was very hot, and you know what, we had, I don't think we had two minutes to sit down, it was a steady stream of people, once church lets out, a ton of people, and it just kept going all, the whole time, so it's amazing how the community comes out and supports, and it's always a really great festival, speaking of support, thank council for supporting the library tonight with the investment, I think that's a great thing for the community, and especially given that this is youth service focused for the kids, but it also will help any user of the library too, given we are doing some of the renovations to the general area as well, congratulations to the Cool State Committee on the garage that weekend, it was a lot of fun, what I thought was one of the neatest aspects of it was you did see some garage sales that were charity fundraiser targeted, so there was one out there for the Lions, one out there for the Late Shore Family Assistance Program, the library was hosting its own little sale to raise money for the library, so, and a lot of kids' lemonade stands, which was pretty cool, so it was fun seeing some of those components too, of not just, you know, people looking to sell some of their own things, but for adding a charity component and getting some of the kids involved too, so congratulations to the Cool State Committee.
I never found a record player.
And finally, I've had a big smile on my face even while we're talking about the garbage issues, because my nephew Logan walked in City Hall just a few minutes ago, he turned five last week, so happy belated birthday to my nephew Logan, he's entering kindergarten this fall, which is amazing, I remember when he was first born, it was COVID twenty-twenty, so we were all spread out, and I put his like newborn picture up on the monitor, which was our newest resident, and lo and behold, there he is, going to kindergarten this fall and just turning five, so happy birthday, Logan. That's it.
Mr. Karen.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Donna over Parks and Rec. She was the mastermind behind the Dogs Day of Summer Weekend over Blossom Heath Park a couple of weekends ago. And it just was a great event. You know, in terms of having something that was dog-friendly over a whole weekend, all the vendors that were recruited for that, all the activities, wiener-dog race, as well as all the jumping dog competitions that they had, the deck diving. I have a few friends that are in that, so it's like, gives me a chance to reconnect with them since they moved out of the area. But it's just great to have that type of event. I know Donna's behind all of it and that. So wanted to say thank you for her and all the Parks and Rec staff that helped out with that. I thought that's a great event and a great new tradition to keep going.
She's a pet lover.
Oh, yes. Oh, definitely. But it was just, I think it's important with all these events that that is something that is like a totally different variety in order, you know, so it's not the same event over and over in that. So I think that's very good to do. Today, successfully, the boat ramp at Chapadin off of Nine Mile officially opened, which is good, since we're going to have to shut down ours October 1st. But I think it's amazing of looking back at the original timeline for that, that they did say it would be closed from August 2023 to August 2025, and they're right on schedule in that for a massive rehabilitation expansion project that they did there. So thanks to the Macomb County Public Works, obviously I'm biased now, but for doing an awesome job in terms of getting that project done and getting it done on time. And also in terms of the results of benefits from the lake, in this last storm, big storm, Chapadin only had to discharge a little over 7 million gallons. But the amount of rain that was there in the past, probably been 50 to 70 million gallons, probably, you know, looking at some of the historical data. So that's the big benefit, all those improvements they did there.
Wow.
You know, that we can have that massive of a storm come through the city, and it's able to retain all that stormwater and then have it processed correctly with GWA instead of having to discharge in the lake. So great job by the team managing that. Next, we're going to start meeting tomorrow on the Harper Little Mac bed around the clock to begin all that restoration work. Now, the clock got reinstalled. Denise is going to be helping out quite a bit with that with the beautification commission, so I do appreciate that. And Brian, while you're here, the new guardrail, did you work with Jeff? I don't know if we're required to have reflectors on it in terms of as it's going around the curve, because we used to have ones that were just stuck into the, into the ground. I don't know by code, some other deflectors need to be on there. So if you can investigate that with Jeff, if that's necessary, or it might be needed in that, especially as the days start to get a little darker. And last, I did want to talk a little bit about Joe Claycombe. Mayor, you did a great job memorializing him at his funeral last week. I do appreciate that. Joe is a wife, or Lil Claycombe is his wife, and so as a part of that, Joe was always a part of all the beautification projects, because he didn't have a choice. He had to be. But it, you know, got to work with him for the last 14 years, have been working with beautification, all these different projects that we've done around the city, whether it's the basic weeding or the full replanting of beds. Joe has always been a part of that. But connection goes a bit back farther than that, because I do remember that when I graduated high school, Joe was the president of the school board, and he's the one that handed me my diploma from high school. So, and back then, you know, he was always referred to as Smiley, because he always had that big smile on his face. Now, sure, story from back in those days, is back then, school boards were contentious. There were some battles in the district, because a lot of schools getting closed and kids getting moved around. It's a lot of heated debates. And I remember Betty Ritchie, who was one of the board members, she would try to really get on point to try to, you know, push things through, how she thought she should be, and would be disagreeing with Joe, and he would just be smiling back at her the whole time. Drove her absolutely nuts every single meeting, that he just had that same smile on his face at every time around that board. So, but that's just how Joe was. He was always happy, great to be around, and he'll be sorely missed in this community for everything that he did in all these commissions. So we'll miss you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karen, for those kind words from Mr. Claycombe. City Manager's Report. A report today. So Item 12, we'll go to Audience Participation. You have a five-minute time limit. The views and opinions expressed under Audience Participation are those of the individual citizen only and not necessarily represent the views and opinions of the Mayor, City Council, the City of St. Clair Shores. So Dr. Hawkins, you're up first.
Again, just a couple, again, I'm not hearing very well, and please excuse me. I'm having trouble with that.
Move that mic over. There you go.
Is that helpful, more helpful? You know, just a few thoughts about, first of all, some follow-up on a comment I made before about the fee is not posted in our, in our city charter for special use. It's supposed to be, but it's not. And all the zoning fees are not, not, not posted. Now, I did look on the internet around some of the communities around us, and I found the going rate for a special use is between $2,000 and $2,500. So if we're not getting that, then we're leaving money on the table. I think we should look into that. Now, the form from Warren was really interesting. It was like 25 pages, and one item stood out. They ask an applicant for special use to give an estimate of the cost of the project. I have not heard anyone offer an estimate as to what this project we discuss tonight is going to cost. Is it $12 million, $15 million, $16 million? It's interesting. The comment that people have pre-bought units that have not even been built or have demonstrations is interesting. It's kind of like, I don't believe it. The other thing I want to mention is that, that we have kind of this view that somehow we can't bring ourselves to ask questions about business plans. You know, we who live around there, we're involuntary stakeholders. If it fails, if they start putting up a structure and it doesn't work, and something's paused and stopped, we're inconvenienced. We're hurt. But the developer hopes to make a lot of money. So he gets the benefit, we have to assume some of the risk. That's an inverted kind of socialism, in my opinion. Now, the ladies' first comment about the people driving across this vacant lot and running across from the street, you know, it's in the code. The special use holder has an obligation to maintain that property. Those mounds of dirt have been there since October 2023, and there's no effort been made to clean it up, to make it presentable. And I think that drive they have with their gravel to give access to work vehicles there, it'd be very simple to put some posts in that until the time comes when they come to work in that, so that people do not come in there and drive through that. You ought to get on them and make them clean it up. And the problem is, it reflects what I perceive is an attitude of the developer to the community. It shows a lack of respect and courtesy. That house that's supposed to be torn down to be part of parking is a mess. The year, the windows have been open for over a year. And if you go and look at it, it's painting, it's falling apart, it is incipient life. You ought to get on them and make them either tear it down, clean it up, along with the rest of it, and make them pay for it. If he doesn't want to do it, we should pay for it and demand that he pay us timely and put a lien on it. The other thing about this thing I mentioned before is, I had heard, and I do not know if it's accurate, that for a time, this developer owed the city a significant amount of money for engineering work that he deferred payment to us. I think that we should, in these projects, demand, as some communities do, escrow accounts. Make him put $100,000, $200,000 in escrow ahead of time to pay us for work that we're going to do, so we don't have to go after them or to defer collecting money that's owed to us. The idea that the realtors are affecting your decision, that's nice, but you ought to talk to bankers. Condominium financing is a very complicated variant of construction building. If it breaks down and it's paused, again, the community, we of us are at risk. You ought to familiarize, if you're not, you ought to familiarize yourself with condominium, construction, banking, finance, and, and demand from this developer that they just show us that they're really going to have the financial wherewithal to be able to proceed in an orderly, uh, uh, manner. This idea that there is a, I did not see in reading the code, a mercy clause. The dog ate my homework. The thing is quite specific, and Mr. Erie's point about there's some question or could be interpreted different ways is appropriate. I think we had a look at that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. Your five minutes is up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am. We just, your name and the city you reside in.
My name is Sheila Jones.
Okay, grab that mic. You got it right to you, so we can hear you. Thank you.
First, good evening, council members. My name is Sheila Jones, and I'm a resident of St. Clair Shores.
Yes.
I'm here tonight to address an issue of fairness and community access, the denial of St. Clair Shores residents to Lakefront Park, even though the park sits on our side of the boundaries. The park is a community access that should be accessible to all residents. The current restrictions are not only prevent, excuse me, the current restrictions not only prevent families in our city from enjoying the park, but also raises serious concerns about transparency and equity. I respectfully ask the council to review the agreements or ordinance that restrict access and make those documents available to the public, and work towards a solution that ensures St. Clair Shores residents can enjoy Lakefront Park. We deserve clarity, fairness, and the ability to share in the resources located within our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Are you, what park are you referring to?
Lakefront Park.
Oh, Gross Point.
Yes.
Okay. We're glad to put that in there and part of the Edsel Ford property, but yep, no problem.
Okay. I, I have a question. Has there ever been residents concerned about that?
Well, I think probably over the years I've been here, we've had comments and questions of why is this park in St. Clair Shores and not accessible for St. Clair Shores residents, et cetera? I'm sure, I've heard that over the years. Yes, yes, and of course.
Okay. And have you had communications with Gross Point Woods regarding access for St. Clair Shores residents to the park?
I don't know if I have. I don't, I don't know if I have. I mean, Mrs. Edsel Ford donated it to Gross Point Woods.
Okay.
Sold it. Yep, sold it to them, and so it's, it's theirs.
But does St. Clair Shores Police police that park?
They do, yes.
And also, does the EMS also police it too?
They do.
So then, my concern would be, why can't the St. Clair Shores residents attend that park? And can you have conversation with Gross Point Woods about this residence of St. Clair Shores access in that park?
Well, we always could ask the question, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And as you know, we have three lovely parks, as you know, I'm sure, and Veterans, and Blossom Heath, and Wabi, and Lock Sinclair. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Scott Champagne. I live in California in St. Clair Shores, homeowner. This village thing really upset me last, last meeting.
Yes.
And then this article, this, this came out, and I'd just like to point out some of the things that this article doesn't say that the meeting said. And one of the big ones is that the taxes, the tax increase is not going to the police and fire. Mr. Karen was really, Miss, Ms. Rusi and Mr. Karen were very clear that it's not earmarked for the police and fire, that, I mean, you said it straight out, it's not going to their salaries. It's not going to pay police and fire salaries. You're going to tell the residents that it's for the police and fire, and it's just not. And it's just going into the city's bank. I called it the pot, the city's bank account. I, I just don't understand why you guys can do that. It's ridiculous. I, if I go out and I say I'm raising money for the police, it's fraud, and I'm going to jail. You guys do it, and what, it's okay? That's, that's just fine. It's disgraceful. This, this leaves out so many key misinformation from that article, from that meeting, that there's, there's no way. It's the same, it's not even covering the same meeting. It just, it leaves that out, that it's not paying for police and fire salaries, no equipment, nothing, you know, you didn't say we're giving them bonuses. We got generous. We're going to give the police and fire bonus, nothing, nothing. They made it very clear that it's not earmarked for police and fire. It's dishonest. It's just dishonest. And it's shameful. My family's got a long history from the city, and it's embarrassing that you guys did this. It's really embarrassing. Some of the things that were left out of this article are so glaring that it's just not a mistake. It wasn't a mistake. There's just no way that was a mistake. This is, way more people see this than watch your stupid hearings. And it's just ridiculous that, you guys are just going to wash this hat. Did you read this article? Did you see that it leaves out all the information that you'd need to know? The people that I've talked to that have read this think there's nothing wrong. We're going to go and vote for police and fire. Why, why wouldn't they think that? Because that's what the article says. Even some of the things, you feel it in your heart? That, I mean, they left it out of here. It's, you know, why, why is option B right? Why is option A right? Why is options, no debate at all, no debate at all. What, what figures showed that option B was right? None. You feel it in your heart? That's, that's, that's why. That's what we get. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's great. Why do we need facts and figures to show what's needed when you feel it in your heart? It's just, it's wonderful. And this doesn't say that. You're, the blackmail speech? Nobody called you a blackmailer. This says, it leaves out the whole speech. It's just ridiculous. There's no way it's a coincidence that it leaves out so much information. It's, I just don't buy it. It's shameful. I'm embarrassed. I, I thank you, Mr. Karen and Ms. Rusi, for defending the taxpayers and always coming to these meetings with information, knowing your facts. I've been watching you guys for a couple of years. Both of you always come with your facts and figures. You guys know your information. Not one of you guys showed any reason why this was necessary. And this doesn't even say that, of all the points that you guys made, that Mr. Karen and Ms. Rusi made, that it doesn't list many of them, it does list a lot of them in here. And this doesn't say anything fake either. It just leaves out so much information. What it doesn't say is that nobody disputed any other points. Nobody said, when he said, it's not going to police and fire, nobody said, well, yeah, it is. Nobody said, no, nobody said anything like that. Just, yeah. You know, and I mean, there's even comments that make it sound like, yeah, it's just going, you know, we can spend a little here and a little there. Like, you know, it's not going for the police and fire. I mean, it's just, I use the word that I heard in the meeting, it's pathetic. It's pathetic. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. You know what? I'm sorry too. Can you guys sign in who spoke? Could you sign in, please? We need, okay.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, I didn't see you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The pen died.
All right.
You got magic injuries.
I saw that too, yeah. So Tom Peterson, Maxine, between Harper and Helen.
Yes.
Homeowner, moved in 2017. Oddly enough, you know, Marty sold me my house, so I
One, everyone's favorite topic is priority waste, right? The one thing that I wanted to bring to city council is that although we don't have a direct number to be able to call and file our complaints and hopefully get our trash picked up and everything else like that resolved, however, if you do call in and tell them that you're calling from Shelby Township instead of St. Clair Shores, you actually get expedited service and you get phenomenal customer service. They are more than accommodating, they are super nice to you, they are more than happy to go the extra mile and tell you that everything is going to be picked up and everything is going to be taken care of, and everything is great. I didn't believe it either when I first did it. However, I've called probably eight times now since January, July 1st, when they took over, and I'm a four-for-four record on saying that I'm from Shelby Township and getting a response to my call within five minutes. So if you want to go that route, if you have major issues, you know, definitely go ahead and just, you know, reference that if you'd like. The other issue that I have is, you know, I've got a young family at home, and the neighborhood in my, you know, area seems to be getting younger and younger, right? And there's a lot more kids that are around. I've tracked the average speed of cars going down my street, and the average speed is actually 41 miles per hour between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So there's a lot of cars that are actually going at a criminal rate of speed down Maxine. And I was wondering if there's anything that, you know, city council has ever considered about maybe speed bumps or temporary speed bumps or any type of, you know, additional signage or anything else like that?
Well, we've put before the radar down some of these streets here to try to show that. We have done that, but nothing on the speed bumps or temporary bumps is that. But chief, do we still bring that radar out at times? Okay, maybe we'll try that, sir.
Okay, yeah, that'd be excellent. But I guess like maybe a longer-term solution, is there, has there ever been any consideration for those type of items? I know other communities have speed bumps, and that school, you know, that area is also a school zone as well, and, you know, we've had countless mirrors smashed off of vehicles and everything else like that. And I don't want to be just the guy that's complaining about it and everything else like that, but I don't know if there's any other considerations for that kind of thing. And then, that was it. So I guess the last item I had is just around the code enforcement website. So it seems like whenever we submit issues on the code enforcement website, the issues are closed within 24 hours, and we have to constantly submit issues to the code enforcement site. Is there an option to be able to leave those code enforcement items open until they're resolved, instead of having to resubmit the same thing over and over and over again? I've been looking at the same pile of garbage, you know, a couple streets down for all summer, right? So I submit it every other week, but the pile's still there and it just says that it'll be scheduled. So I'm just curious if there's another more effective way to be able to track that.
I'll have, after the meeting, come see me. We'll try to evaluate that, yep.
Awesome, thanks. Minute and a half back, thanks.
Great, thank you. And 13th, mayor comments. I don't have any, so motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Ms. Rusi. All favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Good night. Sir?